Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 5, 2011, meeting of the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the Edina City Council. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. We have an agenda that's been distributed in advance of the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second. So moved and second, we approve the meeting agenda. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. The next item before us is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, I do.
Member Brindle?
I would like to remove 4C, please.
4C, okay. I'd like to pull 4D and 4F. Anyone else?
Yes, your honor, I would like to remove 4...did you say E?
I did not.
Okay.
4E as well?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. With the exception of 4C, D, E, and F, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right. We've got...before we get in, let's see here, to the proclamations and other matters, let's look at 4C. Member Brindle?
Thank you. 4C has to do with the taping schedule for Park Board and Transportation Commission. And the item on our report that I have a question about, and I simply want to discuss before we act on this, is number eight. "All advisory board and commission meetings that are conducted in the city council chambers shall be conducted using the standard city council dais," which means up here. And I guess I'd like to know why that is. Because if it is not a recorded meeting, why couldn't they sit at a table with chairs out here if they want to have a discussion like, for instance, the ordinance update meetings that the Planning Commission has been holding? If it's not a recorded meeting, why should it have to be held up here?
Manager Neil?
I think I can respond to that. I think what staff are trying to get at with its advocacy, with our advocacy for number eight, is that we have rooms in this building that are set up to accommodate certain kinds of meetings, sizes of meetings, and styles of meetings. And for those kinds of meetings, we have other places for them to occur. But to rearrange this room and to bring other tables in and to move all the chairs around, it's difficult to get the staff together to accomplish that and then to get it all set up and to get it all taken down when there are viable alternatives to doing that. That's what that was about. So...and also, if, you know, if they're not...I think you hit on it. If they're not being taped, they can still have that kind of discussion around this style of dais. It does take a little getting used to if you're not used to it, but there is a reason why city councils all over America are set up in generally this style of seating arrangement. It is...it does foster communication. It just does take a little getting used to if you're not used to it. That's what I would offer.
Okay. Well, those were my questions and comments.
Member Bennett?
And, manager Neil, you and I had corresponded earlier today about two questions, I think, and one was the statement of policy that meetings that were not videotaped would be audiotaped?
Right. We did...I had a talk...a chance to talk to Ms. Bennarad about that. We can audiotape essentially any meeting in any room where we have them. It'd be important for you to know, however, that the quality of an audio recording from the mayor's conference room is going to be much different and much lower in quality than something that we would do in the community room where we've got a very nice setup there. So that's...I think that's important for you to know. So technologically, those meetings can be recorded, and audio stream can be recorded from those meetings, but it's probably over a tape recorder.
Sure.
And it's not the same kind of quality, doesn't have the same flexibility as a digital recording.
In conversations that I held with people in the community leading up to our initial considerations of this, that was a sort of backup plan that did meet with some favor in terms of...in terms of the shifts that we were asking for, understanding that it's really only been those two boards of commissions, the Park Board and the Transportation Commission, that have been regularly videotaped. So I would...we've talked about it before, I think, in an agreeable manner, and I would ask that it be included. The second thing that I asked about was the two-week rebroadcast schedule because it's such a lesser period of time than some of the other things in our community are shown. And the question that I had is whether we could not establish kind of a regular programming time for board and commission meetings with a rotation through that schedule since of the annual meetings and then the quarterly meetings as well, so that there was consistently some programing...programming in that time slot. And that a meeting with a presentation, for instance, on a matter of general concern, for example, within the past year, there was a presentation on freight rail, the potential for increased freight rail traffic in the city. That kind of presentation could play, then, for more than that two-week period.
Certainly.
Is that...can we make a modification that would enable that to be done, or does it not...I guess the time is not in the list.
No, the time...we did not include the rebroadcast schedule in this list, but I did talk with Ms. Bennarad about that. I think we would...we just talked about it later this afternoon. There aren't any...there aren't any technical issues preventing that from occurring. We would like just an opportunity to maybe put a draft together and make that proposal to the full council and let you see what it might look like. But what we talked about again is that there aren't any...there's no digital storage device that's getting full, and we certainly have the room on our program schedule to do it. It's how we do it that I think you might be interested in.
So, manager Neil, just to clarify, so we'd be looking at, instead of three times a week for two weeks, doing it three times a week until the next quarterly meeting? Is that what's being suggested?
Well, it might be. I think you could...there are some downsides to just doing...to having it on there an unlimited number of times for a long time in that it could be confusing to people that are watching it, and why are we replaying a meeting that happened three months ago? So I think there is sort of a sweet spot in there that we should...we can try to hit, and it could be more than what we do now, but less than the example I just used.
So for something like Beyond the Badge, that's filmed every two months, isn't it? So...and that's playing more than two weeks. It's playing every...three times a week until the next episode, correct? To me, the point of this change in the broadcast policy, one of the underlying reasons was to deliver more focused public material that these chairs would pull together for these quarterly meetings of broad public interest. And because of that underpinning, that's why I would like to see a more frequent schedule. To me, the content is just as important as something like Beyond the Badge in terms of public education. And whether it's two months or three months, if nothing else is playing, why not recirculate the content?
I think I'm comfortable with having you come back with a recommendation to the council, and then we can have that discussion at that point in time.
We can...I can make that proposal to you at our next council meeting on August...
Director Bennarad, you had a comment?
Um, the only thing I would add to that conversation is I would not recommend that the playback be for more than a month because they will...these two groups will be meeting monthly. They just will not be televised monthly. And we've been sensitive in the past about a topic that's heard at a board or commission meeting that overlapping with your city council meeting, and then the viewer becoming confused about the timeline of the process. So if it's heard at Transportation Commission, and maybe then it's heard at Planning Commission, and then it's heard at city council, but the original Transportation Commission meeting is still airing, it does create some confusion for the viewer.
All right. Member Swenson?
So, my question is, is this something that you want to pass tonight, or do you want to come back with a recommendation of playtime added to it, and then we would do it in two weeks?
Well, I think from my standpoint, it would be good to have this policy formalized because we need to begin communicating it out to commissions so that they know what's happening. And because we've been talking about it for a while, and we've been tinkering with it, and we need to...I think it would be good for everybody if we could kind of settle on at least...at least the policy that determines when something gets filmed. I think when after it's filmed and we've got it, you know, in the can, we can have some additional discussion about how often it gets played. But the decision about when to film and not when...and not to film is an important one that's still a little up in the air.
Members Sprague, then.
Also, just following up on Director Bennarad's comments about the interim meetings in between the broadcasted meetings of the ETC and the Park Board. We talked before about making packets, the meeting packets available online. Is that something that needs to be included in this policy?
I would recommend we not include that in the policy because, again, this policy is guiding us on determining when we take...when we record a meeting and when we don't. The idea of putting all that packet information online is a good idea. I support that idea. We need to do that. We have a variety of packet styles, if you will, right now, from...in all of our different commissions, so we need to add some standardization to that process. We're not technically able to put them online on a regular, consistent basis right now, but we will be, and that's a goal that we are striving for.
Okay. Member Bennett?
I am in favor of passing this tonight, but I would like to see a number nine added regarding the audiotaping of all board and commission meetings that are not videotaped. Do I propose that as an amendment?
Well, you could propose it, then. Can I ask a question of...
We don't have a motion, so I think you could...
Miss Bennarad?
You can make a motion with it added.
Because I'd just like to get a little bit of clarification. Is that something that is going to...if we try to hold the most meetings that we can upstairs in the room, that we can tape the best out of the community room and the least out of the mayor's conference room, but we're still going to end up in the mayor's conference room for some, I would assume. Do you see that as a conflict as far as the quality of the audiotape that we would provide if we were going to try to tape more, all of them? And is this something that we currently have the ability to do? Do we have the staff to do it?
To the best of my knowledge, only two groups do not meet in the community room, and those are the Art Center Board and the Community Health Committee. The Art Center Board meets at the Art Center, and the Community Health Committee meets in the mayor's conference room. In both of those cases, they can use a tape recorder. The quality of that will not be as good as a digital device, but it is a suitable recording.
So are you comfortable in having us add that?
Yes.
That I would make a motion that we approve this with the addition of number nine, that all the boards and commission be audiotaped, the ones that are being filmed?
Second.
All right. Discussion? So you're clear on adding number nine? I guess I assumed they were taping everything, but we can make it clear. See, the addition of nine is that all board and commission meetings that are not videotaped for rebroadcast shall be audiotaped? Got it.
Okay.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. 3D was...or 4D, excuse me, was mine, the change order at the Public Works Building. As you noted, Director, who...I've actually also had quite a few calls about the form of landscaping, I guess. And I guess I was...I would like a verbal explanation from you on what's going to be done there to supplement what's already been done.
Yep.
So I can understand better areas that you're going to touch with this additional money.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the actual...the change order that I'm requesting is...was actually work that was completed last fall that I should have had before you prior to this. That was for adding the hydro mulch on the seeding of the upland seeding and the low mow or the low grow turf that we have on the site. That was done prior to freeze-up. We had an early frost last spring or last fall, and the original specifications was to seed and then disc that seed into the top soil using like a straw mulch. And what we found with this building, the city hall, when we did the straw mulch, the straw actually ended up in the neighborhood, and luckily didn't have any complaints on that. So we switched it to a hydro mulch. And when we were trying to close out all of our contracts, we realized that we were over 10% on this change order. To talk a little bit about the actual...what it's supposed to be looking like, is it supposed... the vision of the site was to have a real kind of a low-maintenance type vegetation where we didn't...wouldn't be utilizing city staff to maintain our own public works facility when we have 38, 40 parks within the city itself to be out maintaining the park system? So what our goal was, was to put in a low-grow, no-mow type turf throughout the entire site with the exception of the boulevard area, which is a mowed turf, and then the rain garden, which is a natural plantings in the rain garden area. It takes about two to three years to get it fully established. What you see, the very...the tall crop that's out there is basically a cover crop right now. That'll go away. Next year, it'll be a little bit lower. They do come out...the contractor actually has a three-year maintenance period that they go out and spray for the noxious weeds and such on the site. So what I would ask is one, that you have patience with us and that we go through this process with this particular site and try it for the two to three years. If it doesn't work, we would go back to proposing to sod it and irrigate it if that's the wish of the council. But I...like I say, our ultimate goal was to have a real low-maintenance site.
Let me follow up on a couple little areas. When I go down 74th Street, I haven't seen anything growing there along the fence line, you know, from the front door basically all the way back to the back gate. I don't see anything going on there. It just looks like dirt. And I get calls about that, and it bothers me, too. So I don't know if that's low grow or if you're going to put sod in there and just haven't done it yet. It just...it doesn't look good to me. And then on the corner, where we've got the natural material going, it looks to me like some giant milkweed on the corner, and maybe that falls into the noxious weed category, but it just doesn't seem like it, you know...I don't think it looks the way it should look, and I think other people that call me are asking, "What the heck's going on out there?" You know? So first of all, take the first question about 74th Street. What are you going to plant there?
As I know it, everything is planted, but I'll follow through with the contractor to make sure that what was planted is actually coming up. I'm a civil engineer. I'm not a landscape architect, so I'm taking the landscape architect's word for it and the contractor's word for it. But I'll recircle with the contractor on that.
Okay. Members Sprague?
Mayor, I actually visited the site the other day for a tour of the facility, and it's embarrassing to look at the grass right now. And I'm wondering if there's an alternative between, you know, 100% sod and what's there now, something that's pleasantly aesthetic, that is environmentally sustainable, and that's low maintenance. And what comes to mind for me are simply ornamental native perennials. They should hit all three of those points. Why can't we try to pursue putting some color and some flower to this first-rate facility that we spent over $30 million on?
All right. Well, that's...good point.
What I could do is revisit this with the landscape architects and maybe have them come back at a future meeting and talk about...through the summer months now, there's nothing that we can plant until we get into later August, September. But I could bring them in and kind of revisit it and...
It might be...it might be helpful if a presentation is made for the landscaper to bring in some examples of similar work in other parts of this greater community, not necessarily just our city, but to see how...what that three-year or two-year evolution is like so that we know what to expect and residents can know what to expect...
Right.
...as they look at it.
And I understand what you're talking about. I can see that same evolution on the promenade where we used low-maintenance perennial grasses that they're more prairie in nature, and it's taken a while for them to kind of come into their own. So anyway, thanks for the explanation, and...
Can you...are we not reviewing?
No, I'm going to move it. I'm going to move it right now. I'll move 4D.
I'll cut it.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. 4E was Member Bennett.
Thank you. I asked that this be pulled from the consent agenda because I think one of the items, the one concerning the placing of the "Children at Play" sign, is something that we see in numerous places throughout the community, and I think there is confusion among residents as to what is allowed, what isn't allowed. And I think that we're possibly looking at opportunities both for resident education and then also for enforcement. I know that the Transportation Commission is contemplating revising the NTMP, the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, and making it more user-friendly. And I would hope that possibly there could be some correlation of this issue with that. But that was...I just pulled it to highlight the fact that we do, I think, have some confusion in the community, and it would be good to have policy developed and then have that policy be known and understood.
Okay. Good. Members Sprague?
Yes, a question on 2, Section 82, which is 59th Street, the redux. One of the residents had asked why the street hadn't been reconstructed larger since we don't have enough turning radius for the emergency vehicles? Can you just comment on that? This is on 59th Street, the no parking signs.
Page two of the report.
Yep.
Yep. On 59th Street, the...that's between Kellogg and Oaklawn. Reason why it wasn't enlarged is because of the topography in the area. It's a one yard, already has a retaining wall on it, and the other one, you wouldn't go very far to have another retaining wall. So that's when we went through the public hearing process. The goal was to keep that as a narrow roadway.
Thank you.
All right. With those comments having been made, Member Bennett, would you move 4E?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you. Members Sprague?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor of approving 4E, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. And then F was one that I asked to be pulled, and I think this is probably a question for city attorney on page one, finding for variances under Arabic 2. Practical difficulties means the following. Under A, at the end of that language, unlike under B, it's unclear whether it's a standalone test or if it's to be read in the conjunctive, I guess it would be. Are they multiple parts of the test that you have to pass, or are they individual tests?
They are multiple parts. You have to pass each one.
Each one you have to satisfy to be able to meet the standard for practical difficulty.
Correct.
So then it seems...then it seems to me that 2A ought to have an and after the semicolon.
We can certainly put that in. I think that because B has the and and is preceded by the semicolon, it follows that all three are required, but it wouldn't detract to put an and in there.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Well...
It doesn't start till the next. You have to be pretty with it to catch the semicolon on it, to be honest.
Then the other...Member Bennett, do you want to...
Your honor, if I might, there is actually a change memo at your desks without the peach-colored cover sheet, and there are a couple of language corrections to mirror the statute. Otherwise, the language remains the same as was before you. It does not go specifically to the points that you were raising, but does go to others.
Okay. Good. Well, then, working off the draft at our desk, at the dais, it seemed to me, too, that number three was in an odd spot. I don't know if any other council members feel about it. It says, you know, "After the test for practical difficulties comes the language, 'Economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties.'" And then it goes on to say, "What practical difficulties do include but are not limited to." Now, maybe it's just too close a reading of this, and it doesn't matter where three gets posited here, but it seemed to me that it should be down between seven and eight towards the end so that you've got a definition of practical difficulties, and then it's talking about what it includes, and then what it...you know, that economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties more toward the end before you get to the voting section. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts along those lines. Maybe it's fine just where it is. Member Bennett?
If I might also, your honor, I...the staff did include the state statute, the Act, in the packet. It was very helpful. And the draft that we were originally presented with and that in almost complete form is in front of us this evening does mirror the language of the Act pretty closely. And the practical...the economic considerations alone language does precede the other language regarding practical difficulties in the Act, in the state statute. And in fact, it looks like it was original language modified by the most recent legislative activity. In that way, there's a good read between our ordinance and the state statute. There's a tracking, there's a logical order, and there's a consistency of language point to point to point.
Okay. It's nothing of great consequence in my reading, and we don't have to second-guess the legislature, but any other comments?
I do.
Member Brindle?
Looking at Arabic number one, then, I would include an and after the point A in number one.
To be consistent with...
To be consistent with what we're doing in number two. Would that be appropriate? Okay?
Yes. Yes. Members Sprague?
On four, practical difficulties include but are not limited to inadequate access to direct sunlight for solar energy systems, comma, and...what does the and refer to? Is that a typo? So we need to strike that.
Yep. Strike that.
And put a period after systems.
Right. So we've got three changes. All right. Those changes get noted? All right. With those changes having been made, I'll move the matter.
Second.
Are you waiving second reading in your resolution?
I just assumed waive second reading. Is that acceptable to the seconded?
It is.
Discussion? Roll call.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Members Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Member Swenson. Okay. That's all of the consent agenda. The next matter we have in front of us, we move into the special recognitions and presentations section of the agenda, and Mr. Gilgenbach, I didn't get a chance to meet with you before the meeting this evening, but you're here to talk about a donation to the fire department. So welcome. Come on up. Want to have the part of our team up there with you? Mr. J...all right. Good. And please give us your name and your business address as well.
Mine?
Yes, please.
Name, Jordan Gilgenbach, City of Edina, 4801 West 50th.
All right.
We are here...FM Global Insurance is presenting the Edina Fire Department with a grant to print the EFD Pulse, our bimonthly newsletter. I'm going to turn it over to Tom Jensen, fire marshal here, who's going to tell you a little bit more about it.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Hovland and council members. So here just tonight, discuss our EFD Pulse a little bit. We have a copy, I think, in your packet there, our current issue. This started back in September of '08. Seventeen issues later, we have yet to repeat a subject matter in our EFD Pulse. So the grant is that we distribute this electronically to our school districts and our different childcare centers throughout the city, but not everybody... and our different childcare centers throughout the city, but not everybody gets it electronically. So not everybody signed up for CD Extra, which we'd like to encourage people to do because it does come out through a press release, I believe, is how it's done. But we would like to make copies available to people that don't get it electronically and we just don't have the funding for that. So with the grant from FM Global, we'll be able to do this for the next 3 issues, which start with the September 1. We'll print, I think, about 1,500 copies per issue. So let's get a September and then November and January's issues, so. Very grateful to them. And just briefly, how this thing got started, Brian Hanrahan and Todd Porthan, two of our paramedics, new dads several years ago, taking parenting classes at the community center. The parents found out who they were. They were just dads in the room and they found out they were paramedics at the Vdina and started asking them questions about fire and EMS and when do I take my kid to the hospital, when do I call you guys and all this. And it turned out, it turned into a presentation we make there yearly with the parenting classes and, and been having a lot of fun with it and, but we only get them for an hour once a year, so Brian and Todd came to me with the idea of let's do a newsletter. And that's where it got started with 2 dads taking a class and, and then doing some more presentations and now we're doing this by month. We're having fun with it. Like I said, we have to repeat a topic and, and we have a lot to say, so this is just another way to communicate with our residents. So Steve Cannon's here from FM Global to present us a check tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're from FM Global Insurance?
Yes, we're a commercial.
Why don't you give us your full name and business address too?
Full name and business, Steve Cannon with FM Global Insurance Company. We're at 505 Waterford Place in Plymouth, Minnesota, 55414, if you need the zip code. And on behalf of the FM Global Fire Prevention Grant Program, I'm very pleased to present a check for $1,800 to Vdina Fire Department, Tom Jensen, medical staff, paramedics, for the printing of their, the EFD Pulse newsletter.
Well, thank you for your, thanks to you and your company for your generosity.
Thank you.
Anyone want to add anything? Photo? Okay.
All councils available for questions, one of the grand.
Yeah, you're right.
I guess.
You want to use standard, shake his ass, check?
Thank you.
I just like this little, I think it's really cool. It's a bit of a hat, yeah.
Mr. Ecton, welcome. You're next up to talk about our annual financial report and the work that your company has done in looking at the books and records of our, of our city. So, nice to see you again.
Mayor?
City council members, mayor, members of staff, thanks for having me this evening. My name is Jim Ecton. I'm with Malloy Montague Kornowski Rudasovich, MMPR, I'm the city's auditor, here to give a presentation this evening on the audit results for the year. Presentation is intended to be a broad overview of the results and give some indication on how the audit process went. We did issue 3 reports along with the city's financial statements that is issued annually. It is our role to come in and determine, based on our opinion, that the city's annual financial statements are prepared in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. In our role as auditor, we do a number of other processes. We issue, this year anyway, a single audit of federal awards, depending on the, the level of the city's federal revenue they receive. If it's over $500,000, you're required by law to have a single audit of federal awards. So we issue 3 opinions in that regard, regarding some of the areas that are required, internal controls, compliance with the requirements of the program, as well as the compliance of preparing the actual schedule itself. We do issue a number of other opinions and with regard to internal controls and compliance with various laws and regulations that relate to the various financial reporting process. And lastly, we issue an opinion on the city's compliance with state laws and regulations. The Office of the State Auditor here in the state of Minnesota issues guidelines for us to prepare our audit presentation. As I mentioned earlier, there were 3 documents that were provided to you, the first one being the city's basic financial statements, the second one being a, a set of special purpose audit reports, and lastly, the management report. And the management report is really the report that I give to summarize the audit results and I'm gonna go through that in my presentation this evening, at least hitting on the high points. In that document, we do summarize the audit results and they mimic the various opinions that I provided earlier. We did issue an unqualified or clean opinion on the city's basic financial statements. Unqualified is a technical term, but the real, lanest term would be a clean opinion. The city's received that opinion for, for most or all, I should say, all of the financial statements over the last number of years. With regard to the single audit of federal awards, we did not have, have any findings to report. The city did receive a number of smaller grants, but did exceed the $500,000 revenue threshold I mentioned. But typically, when cities of your size have single audit of federal awards, that you're not having them annually, it is, I won't say it's unusual, but we do tend to have findings in the area. So if you have no findings is a, not only a good result, but an exit result, just because of the nature of not having federal grants each year. We also did not have any findings with regard to the city's internal controls over a financial report or in the compliance area. Again, an exit result with regard to that. Nor did we have any findings in the compliance with Minnesota state laws and regulations. In total, we didn't have any findings to report, which is excellent. That's not always the case, not only in the audits that we do, but also the past audits the city has had. So an exceptional result when it comes to the compliance portion of the audit. The second part of the audit really goes into other areas that I talked about earlier. In my report, I did mention the audit summary portion of my management report. In that document, we go through a number of areas. First one being that the city did submit the audit report on a timely basis. You did follow the plan, scope and timing that was outlined as part of our audit process at the beginning. That document also goes and follows up on prior year findings. I think it's an important result, not only to point out we didn't have any findings, but also eliminated 2 findings that you had last year in the bid, and quote, area. And lastly, the document goes through some other formal required communications which lead you down a path of noting that the audit was very smooth this year and we didn't have any really concerns in the process overall. I mentioned that the audit really has 2 portions, one being the compliance areas, the second one being, well, how is the city doing financially, some of the trends and conditions that are moving forward. In my management report, I go through a number of graphs that tend to bring out some of the highlights of your financial areas. The first one being in the area of property taxes. Most cities in the state of Minnesota are experiencing this similar trend in the, in the market values of your properties. You're seeing after a long-term trend of increasing property values, a flattening out of that value. I think overall in the state in 2010, as reflected here, average cities statewide experienced a decrease of about 3% in property values. The city Vdina decreased about 1.5%. Now this, although it says 2010, is it actually January 1st, 2009 data, so you can expect to be taxable market values in the state and potentially in the city Vdina to, to continue to decline. How that impacts your city really is not only in the area of market value, but also in the tax rates and the necessary tax rates that are needed to generate revenues for the city to pay its operations. The city has traditionally had lower than average, average tax rates, as shown here in this presentation. There's a number of reasons for that, that I don't necessarily go into all the details, but you can see the average tax rate in the city Vdina, both for the city specifically, but overall, in total, when you incorporate the county and the school, is lower than some of, is lower than statewide and metro area averages. That being said, the city does generate higher than average property tax revenues on a per-capita basis. You can see on this presentation, which is a revenue in your governmental funds, which includes general and special revenue and debt service, revenue per capita, your property taxes are higher than average, even though you have a lower than average tax rate. In total, the revenues of the city per capita are above averages. Some of the items that are noteworthy in 2010, you'll note that the tax increment revenues are significantly lower than the previous 2 years. Most of, almost all of that relates to the decertification of, I think there was 2 tax increment districts and you'll also note on the expense side, you'll see lower than, lower than previous year expenditures. You'll also note that the special assessments revenues went up and that's really related to one particular assessment on the country club project that tends to swing, certainly in that area, up and down depending on the level of projects. The lastly, I wanted to point out the intergovernmental revenue, intergovernmental revenue line, which has to do with some of those grants that are, we're talking about earlier, in that you receive some additional federal revenues, which is increasing that line item. On the expenditure side, we're seeing trends that are typical of, of city government, both here it's in the statewide, but also in the metro area, in that expenditures on a per-capita basis are tending to decline. And there's a number of reasons for that, but mostly in the area of the, the economic impact on governments is causing the need to lower overall costs, but also contain costs moving forward. This particular graph does reflect expenditures in 3 categories, current, capital and debt service. First one I would point out is the debt service one, in that you'll see a significant decline in the, the expenditures for debt service in 2010 compared to the previous 2 years. All of that, or almost all of that relates to the tax increment revenue I was referring to earlier. Some of the tax increment debt has been paid off and is lowering the overall cost. The other item I would point out is in the public safety area. You can see that the city Vdina does tend to have higher than average expenditures in that area, mainly to do to the full-time fire department that the city has, which would have higher costs than a similar city of your size. The management report then goes to other financial trends, the general fund being the most, the biggest fund of the city in terms of your overall operation. This particular presentation shows 2 indications of your equity or well-being, that being fund balance and cash balance, the second one being the expenditures to really show the overall size of the operation. The fund balance and cash balance did increase this particular year. In 2010, you see that the fund balance actually increased by about $829,000, which compares to a budgeted decline, a fund balance of about $1 million. So it's about a, close to a $2 million swing there. At the end of the year, the city does have fund balance policies that, that determine the levels of fund balance in its general fund. At the end of the year, the remaining fund balance was about 1.5 million of undesignated, which typically gets discussed as part of the next year's budgeting process. Couple of other items of note, I think we go into some revenue graphs. This particular graph looks very similar to other cities that we work with in that more and more cities are needing to rely on their tax revenues to fund their overall operations, considering the other revenue sources continue to be flat or in some cases declining. The overall revenues in the general fund were increased about 0.6%, which is quite minimal. And the other important item of note that could be a concern, that has not been a concern, is in total, the general fund property tax revenues were actually above budgeted amounts and most cities were, were concerned about experiencing lack of payment for property taxes due to the economy. And in your case, in most comparable cities, taxes have been actually meeting budgeted expectations or exceeding those. In the expenditure side of the equation, again, the city experienced very good financial results in your general fund expenditures. They were roughly $743,000 under budgeted amounts. When you look at all the various details regarding those budget, almost every department within the city did have budgeted amounts less than expenditures. There's a significant impact you can see by the departments going into various cost containment methods and measures to keep the costs down. You'll also see, if you look at the details, many departments having budgeted expenditures less than budget due to positions not being filled when they were open due to various reasons. The other funds of the city are, are also addressed in my management report, including the utility fund. You can see the utility fund green bar here reflects the operating income. Of the, of the utility fund continues to be very consistent. You see in 2010, a slight increase in overall revenues of about 1 to, 1.2%. The liquor fund has similar operating results in the sense of the green bar showing operating income being very consistent from one year to the next and the overall revenues increasing slightly about 1.7%. On the, on the slightly negative side, the golf course fund did experience a decline in its overall operations. I think this is consistent with other golf course operations that we work with. Golf course last year, at least in 2010, and probably similar in 2011, I can't speak to that because I only audited 2010, but the weather wasn't exactly friendly last year in 2010 when it came to golf course operations and you can see that, certainly in your revenue side of the equation. Lastly, the management report does go through a number of other areas, including additional financial trends and analysis. But lastly, it talks about other accounting and auditing updates. As I talked to staff, I made them aware of one change that will happen in the accounting and auditing area. They did, they did redefine the idea of fund balance and for governmental funds. Right now, the terminology used for fund balance include items like designated and reserved and unreserved as terminology to define fund balance. A new GASB standard will redefine those to be called non-spendable, restricted, I'm reading, committed, assigned and unassigned. So now that the council knows those old terms, they're changing the terms for next year. What that means to you is you can expect your finance staff to come to you with some changes in, in policy as a result of the change in wording. So in summary, I did issue a clean opinion on the city's basic financial statements. I did audit the city's schedule of federal awards this year. I did not have any findings of note in, with regard to internal controls and some of the compliance testing I had. I also noted continuing assessment improvement in internal controls. I think the city staff has done an exceptional job of looking at internal controls, and this is not only this year, but in the past, and developing new controls in areas where they, they seem to find either limited, limited controls or maybe areas that need improvement due to some employee changeover, or just areas that are a concern to them. And I think that's an important item of note to the council is that not only the council, but also the staff find the internal control area very important and continue to work on. I did mention the financial results of the general fund were improved, as well as some of the other funds continued to show solid financial results. And lastly, and I think of most important to the council, is that the financial records they audited, that I audited, were in excellent condition and that the information that being provided to you today can be used to make informed decisions along the way. And that's most important to you as you receive items on a day-to-day basis.
We had a couple of, I think, smaller items last year that obviously had been cleared up.
Yeah, there were 2 findings last year of note. Both were in the, really the bidding and compliance area, which are state laws and regulations. We are required to audit those particular findings and determine their, if the corrective action plans were implemented, which, which they were, and no findings resulted in those 2 areas.
All right, good. So just in sort of a rough summary way, what you found was that on the revenue side, we were 3.8% above budget, million plus, better than we thought we were gonna do and the expenses were about 3/4 of a million dollars less than we thought we were gonna have, so despite the challenges of the economy. So despite the challenges of the economy, we, our folks did a great job of cost containment and exercising some pretty good strategies on both revenue and expense side, it sounds like.
Yeah, the expenditure side, or the expenditure side of the equation, almost all of it, in the sense of the under-budget areas had to do with cost containment or not filling positions that were open, which is a lot to do with the staff and finding ways to keep those costs down in a tight budget situation, which is exceptional.
Good. Questions for Mr. Eichen? Anyone? Okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you for that thorough report. Your firm does very good work for us, I think, and it's good to see such a clean bill of health.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to receive the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended December 31, 2010?
So moved.
All right, moved, moved and seconded. Moved, member, seconded, member Brindle. And further discussion?
If I might, your honor, it was really helpful, thanks to staff, to have this information early this year. It's a lot of information, very text dense, and I think that this information, combined with last year's budget process, combined with the budget process that we have just started for this year, as well as the survey results, are all going to help us, I think, plan well with an understanding too of what the community values, how well some of the cuts that we made last year, or positions that were left unfilled, how that worked. We know that it worked from a financial standpoint, how did it work from a service standpoint? So all of that information combined, I think, is going to help us have a very productive budget process this year. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor of receiving the annual financial report, the caffers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those saying nay. Carried. And Director Wall and Mr. Rogerman, any comment supplemental? Come up here and get the accolades of the praise of the council for your work.
Just, I would like to thank Eric for all he puts, puts in, as well as our new accountant, Kyle, did, did a lot of work on this this year, and the rest of our staff for what it takes to put this together.
Well, I think our council wants to thank you and your staff for doing an excellent job, and every department head for really looking out for the best interests of the people in our town. So it's good, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That completes the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. We're going to move into the public hearing section of the agenda, and we're going to have a public hearing on our proposed Valley View sidewalk from McCully Trail to Hillary Lane. Mr. Sullivan, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. I'll be giving a brief overview of the sidewalk improvements for Valley View Road, but before I do that, I want to draw your attention to a petition that should be on your D S this night, this evening, that came in this afternoon. I'll talk in more detail about that in a few minutes, I can kind of crunch some of the numbers. Staff didn't have a lot of time to look at it, but enough, I think, that we can give you a good overview of the theme associated with that petition. And I'm sure there's a number of residents here tonight that will elaborate on that position as well. We are looking at a, proposing a sidewalk along the north side of Valley View Lane from McCully Trail over to the Large Oak Tree at the intersection of kind of Braymar Boulevard, Hillary Lane area. There's a couple of photos of what the road looks like today. It's a state aid roadway, varies in width from 27 to 31 feet or so, depending on which section of the roadway you're looking at. There's some grade changes with some driveways and some side slopes, as well as a number of sharp corners, and I use a number of corners, some are sharp and some are gradual, that kind of maybe limits some site issues that we expressed a little bit in the field with a few residents. This project actually has quite a long history. Initially, it was proposed as a sidewalk improvement project back in 2004. Staff had a chance to take a look at that, and after looking through the process a little bit more, realized that the addition of just a sidewalk, a standalone boulevard-style sidewalk was not the, maybe the most appropriate method moving forward. Reason being is state aid standards really were one of the concerns. We have a boulevard-style sidewalk practice here in town, and trying to fit that in, knowing that the roadway was getting near its end of its life, some drainage improvements, other roadway realignment issues that were necessary, really made it feel like it was a larger project, needed to be a street reconstruction project with the addition of a sidewalk installed. And so staff had put that on a capital improvement program moving forward and had allocated that for construction in 2011. We had met with a number of residents last August, kind of laid out a plan, and anticipated construction this summer. And this is the graphic that we showed. It may be a little difficult to see here, but the big items that you can really look at is that proposing a sidewalk, boulevard style on the north side, along the east-west portion, and along the east side of kind of the north-south portion. The big change would be the realignment of the intersection down at the, the Large Oak Tree down there. Would actually create a stop condition for vehicles traveling eastbound, and have more of a through movement to the north and south to get vehicles to use the Braymar Boulevard, Hillary Lane way around town. We had intentions of moving forward this, like I said, in 2011, however, a number of things kind of came up. The 169484 interchange project kind of sprang on us. State had moved forward rather quickly. We met in August, I think the state was really talking, and maybe September, October timeframe, and really moving forward in earnest with this project. And that required a payment of this, from the city of $1.4 million. That exceeded the amount of money that we get annually from our state aid gas tax funds. So already, we were looking for some funding source, we were in some shortfall. Secondly, realizing that we didn't think it was maybe the best idea to close down this roadway while the interchange was being closed down. Number of items that were kind of going on is some road closures at 78th Street, kind of made this a quasi-detour for the local residents, as well as a number of small utility companies who are relocating or upgrading services along this corridor. So we felt like, why, maybe tearing up this road now, just have it torn up in a couple more months, or having additional traffic trying to use this, might not have been the best solution. Recognizing that there's a number of other state aid projects that are kind of higher in the, in the, in the chain of being constructed, 70th Street, for example, 44th Street, that the shortfall just kind of left us with, well, what do we do now? Hearing from a number of residents, a number of concerns throughout the community, that something should be done, we shouldn't put a project on hold. Staff suggested that we do an interim measure of putting a raised sidewalk along that side of the roadway. And so I'll talk a little bit more about that here, in the details of what that would look like in a second. So we sent this back out to residents for an open house in June 15, had 10 property owners come to our meeting at Public Works, had a great discussion topic, a lot of it centered around how long this sidewalk could be in place. Also talked quite a bit about some sightline issues that were developed on some of the side streets. Sally Lane and Comanche Court were the two that were most talked about in ways to mitigate those sightline issues. So that was some of the discussion that went into the feasibility report. In addition, we referred to the comprehensive plan to see how this sidewalk we proposed would fit into that plan, and it is consistent with both the sidewalk plan and the bike facility plan. Although we're not proposing a bike lane on here, it's kind of consistent with that, multiple modes of travel. And like I mentioned just a minute ago, there was a petition that was received just today, this afternoon, looked like it had 68 signatures on it for individuals who were against addition of the sidewalk at this time. Like I said, some quick number crunching, about 47 property owners were represented, and I approximated about 22 within the project area. Project area is a kind of a broad term, but generally in this region. More importantly, 15 of the 23 homeowners who live along the actual corridor where the sidewalk would be installed, 65% of them were not in favor of putting the sidewalk in. So just for your information that we, that we could gather today. This graphic, like I said, is kind of a quick turnaround here this afternoon, it came in about 1:30 or so. You can see down in the corner here, I kind of assumed this, this area to be the project area, and that's the 22, the 22 individuals that had responded, but 15 of those, like I said, live along this section here, which is the highlighted pink ones with the signatures against the sidewalk. So what was the sidewalk that we're proposing or are proposing this evening? We're proposing to put a five-foot raised bituminous asphalt sidewalk along the north side. We don't have any other sidewalks like this in town. However, it's very similar, what I would say, to our older style of sidewalk in town, where you have a curb, and then right behind it, you have the concrete or asphalt sidewalk. The roadway itself is almost wide enough to facilitate construction that's without, without any widening, but there's going to be two to three feet of widening in, along the corridor. So it's close, it's, like I said, between 27 and 31 feet, and we're going to kind of squeeze up the lanes a little bit, down to state minimum standards, shift them to the south a little bit, and then use that room to the north, and then additional two to three feet of asphalt to get that sidewalk installed on that side. Maybe minimal impact to the boulevards, there's a number of homeowners along there that have different types of vegetation, whether it's just a more natural slope, or more manicured type lawn and other trees, arborvitae, pine trees, things like that, even myilox along there, that most cases will be able to fit this in. One location that has a, some type of ornamental pine around a mailbox that would need to be relocated, more than likely. We were proposing to do this work this summer, and we expect it to be in place in about two, for, in place for somewhere between two to six years. Currently, in your packet, it's anticipated in a 2005 capital improvement plan. However, we've talked already tonight about shortfalls in the state budget, and the dollars that we receive from our state aid gas tax funds, and the other needs within our community that may be ahead of it in the, in the chain of command here. So we anticipate 2015, but it could slide a little sooner if some funds are available, or other projects get pushed back, or could get pushed out a little bit, 2016 potentially as well. But that project would be what we talked about early on, a more comprehensive realignment of the intersection, boulevard-style sidewalk, potentially lighting, some of these other amenities that residents may or may not look for along there. And that would be a project that would be assessed to residents. We would do our typical state aid assessment policy of 20% to the residents. This is an example of what it would look like. It's difficult to see on this kind of graphic, but there's a small raised section that actually does develop in here, and this is about a three to four foot raised section from the actual, or slope down. We would anticipate, this is one up in Minnetoka area, where they have a white fog line along the edge of the road to delineate for the traffic. We'd also suggest on our project installing a white fog line at the top of this to delineate for residents, walkers, bikers, that this is an area that does have a slope to it. This would not be a special assess project or any assessment to residents. We would anticipate taking this out of the Public Works maintenance budget at a cost of about $90,000, what we estimate at this time. That cost, it does include some dollars, about $10,000, to re-landscape the northwest and the northeast corner of Sally and Valley View. That's an area that we met with residents, Director Hul and I met with residents last week on, and, because it was a major topic point of the discussion that was at our open house, and trying to find ways that we could help, help the sightline situation at that location, and set ourselves up for this more comprehensive project in a couple of years down the road. Getting vegetation established now, that would, that would lead us into a easier transition in the two to six-year timeframe that we discussed earlier. So at this point, I will take any questions you have on this, and I guess I'll open it up. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Sullivan at this point in time? Staff later? Member Sprague?
Mr. Sullivan, can we talk a little bit about the ADT and 85th percentiles for the street? And I want to go back to the closest you have to the original petition date, and then forward from there if you can.
Certainly. The ADTs, we've taken, the state requires the state counts every four years on this roadway. We've taken it with the most recent data, since 2005 and 2009. 2005, we had almost 3,700 cars a day traveling this roadway. In 2009, we actually lowered that down to about 2,400 cars a day. The speeds respectively were around 31 to 32 miles an hour back in 2005, and dropped a little bit to about 29 miles an hour in 2009. So both of these numbers, we typically look at putting a sidewalk on a roadway above the 750 or so cars per day, so this is well above that roadway amount, or the ADT amount.
So traffic volumes and speed have decreased since 2005, since the original petition?
That's, that's correct. And I would, I would specu, I would use a broad stroke to say that's been somewhat consistent across our community. There's been a probably, this is more substantial, but I would say that somewhere between a 10 and 15% reduction in ADT across our community. This is, this is more like a 30% reduction, so certainly quite a bit higher than typical. And I'm sorry, your second question was more about, I think, accident data?
Yes.
You know, the original petition was, it was sent in in 2004. We keep current, or we currently have data for a 10-year time period moving back from 2010 to 2001. And in this location, along basically from the frontage road, McCully Trail, over to the Large Oak Tree at the Hairpin Turn there, there's only really been four documented accidents through the police department. Three of those were after, 2004 and after, and they kind of involved things such as sideswiping a vehicle during the February, kind of a snow event, snowy roadways. Most of those happened west of Comanche Court, between Comanche and Sally. 2006, in July, there was a, just a car ran off the road west of Comanche Court. There again, the data didn't, a lot of these cases are during the day, or shortly after dusk, but no real obstructions on the road, no, no known causes such as alcohol or anything like that. And same thing in 2007, February, where a car ran off at the intersection with Comanche and hit a, the street signs, sign, and I'm assuming, based on the time of year and the reports from the police, that there again, some, some ice conditions were probably presented itself at that time.
And then in terms of the temporary nature of the improvement, have we done this for any other state aid project that's been delayed in the CIP?
We have not. There's nowhere else in our community where we have done a measure like this to temporarily, from a two to six-year timeframe, do this. We stated that, you know, it's certainly would be setting somewhat of a precedent here, but staff did hear enough correspondence from individuals that we needed to bring it forward and ask council opinion on how to proceed.
And it's $90,000 for the improvement. Do we have an estimate on maintenance for the four to six years?
I would anticipate in a four to six-year timeframe, maintenance would really amount to snow plowing on this corridor, and I don't have a figure for that. But as far as pavement life, pavement wouldn't need any pot hole patching and things like that in any time. I can anticipate maybe refreshing the fog lines, the white stripes that would be both on the street side and on the sidewalk side. I don't have those dollars available, but minimal costs anywhere, costs that are somewhat associated with our typical maintenance activities. With a sidewalk located as, as it is, we could really put our wing plow down and almost plow it in the same, in the same pass that we do when we plow the street. We do the belly plow for the street, and then do the wing plow to plow that snow back on a second step.
So if this, this project, the sidewalk element, were not to happen, would there be any immediate measures taken with the sightline issues that you discussed?
I guess that is something from a staff perspective, we would not be leading in, but would certainly ask the council for some opinion on that. Like I said, Director Hul and I have met out there, they're compliant with our clear view ordinance, the 30-foot corner clear view. However, they do, it still poses, if you bend out to the intersection, poses greater problems than that. We've installed a stop bar to try to help. There's a unique situation with the stop signs, it's back considerably further from the intersection than it should, based on a driveway location. So we've installed a stop bar just actually yesterday, this morning, excuse me, to help try to get cars lined up where they safely can stop. It doesn't alleviate the problem, we understand that. But realistically, I'm not sure how staff would proceed here based on the sightline issue. They're in compliance with the clear view, and I'm sure there's many other parts of our community that have very similar type of clear view issues that we would, well, how would we address those? Would we go looking for them, or just would respond to them on a complaint basis? I guess that would be a discussion we'd need to delve into.
But the vegetation you're concerned about is in the right of way, so technically it can be removed?
Correct. Within our right-of-way code, there is ability for vegetation that's coniferous, year-round vegetation, not to be within the right-of-way. The deciduous type vegetation is somewhat, I think, is allowed, and I defer to our attorney tonight to, for clarification, but, so we have a little bit of, one corner has quite a bit of coniferous vegetation, other corner has a lot of deciduous vegetation, so we'd have to look at applying that.
Members' question. Thank you.
I think making a comment about neighborhoods, we often talk about the way people can get in and out of their neighborhood. And this has one, it has the swoop around the oak tree, it has the frontage road dumping out at Gleason and the crosstown, which was being repaved today. That was not a pleasant experience to get there, but I'm going to be really happy when it's repaved. Or the breadcrumb that goes, I think Webster, Mohawk, Indian Hills, I don't know, pick your next one, Navajo, Cherokee, if you know how to do. If you know how to do that one, you can get out onto Gleason. Is that correct in saying that it really doesn't have a lot of ways to get out?
Certainly limited. You know, this is Sally Lane as it drains down here, they're, short of going out to the frontage road and going north or south, yes, it does limit the number of locations for exit. Comanche Court obviously is a shorter cul-de-sac, but yes, it is a cul-de-sac, so there's the only way in and out for that location.
Thank you. Member Bennett.
Yes. Mr. Sullivan, we do, as a community, emphasize network and connections, and I know that that's a place that we want to move toward, is having a better sidewalk network. But it's also my understanding that the sidewalk plan that was part of the 1999 comprehensive plan was not actually studied, that there was no sidewalk study that preceded the current comprehensive plan. Am I correct in that understanding?
There was no formal study rolled out to the community, correct? It was a staff-led initiative to look at the conductivity in appropriate locations based on some traffic volumes and other type of factors that would go into it. But yes, it probably did not have the level of detail that you're alluding to.
Something that is helpful, though, is that there was a school speed zone study, I believe, done in 2009 while the comprehensive plan, after it had been actually submitted to the Met Council. And there are some maps in there that show the walking zones for the school. I brought my copy tonight, and if you could put it under the camera, we could see what the walking zone is for, not Creek Valley, that would be another page, but this is for the high school and for Valley View Middle School. Okay. As I note, it appears that the eastern border of the walking zone is east of, is near Galway, that the southern border is south of St. Patrick's Church with some variations in the border, that the western border of the walk zone is just west of Gleason, taking into account a couple of the shorter streets that lead off Gleason, and finally, that the north border is, and I'm not going to be able to read this even with reading glasses, but it's near Creek Valley Elementary School and then the athletic fields that are north of the high school. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so at this point, the walking zone is not anywhere near where this sidewalk temporary or permanent would be placed, correct?
Correct. It'd be off the page down to your southwest, lower left.
And is there sidewalk along, my understanding is that there is pavement along Macaulay Trail, the frontage road to 62169, winding around to 62?
You mean sidewalk or there's pavement?
There's pavement, right. But there is no sidewalk connecting along Valley View Road?
Correct.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you. Thanks for the answer.
Member Brindl, anything?
I do.
Mr. Sullivan?
I do. I have a number of comments. This happens to be my neighborhood, so I know many of the people who are here tonight. So first of all, thank you for being here. I will ask one question, and then I'm going to save some of my comments for after.
Sure.
Okay. In the project history, Jack, that you had in your presentation earlier, one of the comments was that a standalone sidewalk project was not feasible as of the 2004 petition for a sidewalk that was signed actually by many of the people sitting here tonight. And what makes this standalone sidewalk project feasible and desirable now?
Member Brindl, thank you for letting me clarify that. You're correct. At the time, the option was this would be the only improvement, would be the sidewalk. And like I said, staff believes that it's a much larger project that's necessary here in the coming years, and so I think that's why we're willing to entertain the idea of this interim measure, because it is just that, an interim measure, that at the time, the standalone sidewalk as the fix-all for this corridor was not the fix, that there was a larger one. But we're saying that, we recognize that there's more that needs to be done out here, and this would just get us through to that next stage.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for you, Mr. Sullivan. Over the years, I've visited with folks in that neighborhood, and they tell me that their biggest safety concern isn't somebody walking in the street and having to worry about cars coming down Valley View. The problem is that Macaulay Trail and Valley View, that there's very, let me put it this way, there's a concern over whether people will actually stop at that stop sign at Valley View and Macaulay Trail. And over the years, I've been asked to think about some sort of a mechanism that we could put in place, I suppose something akin to what we've done over at Cornelia School, where not only do you have a sign solar-powered that flashes the speed, which could be north of that intersection on Macaulay Trail, but also something from a signage standpoint for a stop sign that actually lights up itself, that would be solar-powered, to warn people coming south to north that there's a stop sign right around the corner, or some sort of a pre-warning, and then an actual flashing stop sign. Now, are any of the things that you're proposing, do these safety measures get encompassed in that proposal in any way?
Mayor, they do not with this proposal. This is to be just strictly a sidewalk improvement. We could certainly entertain that idea, or we had anticipated doing this with more of the long-term solutions as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now. Anyone else for staff? All right. Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up for public testimony. In the past, we have tried to run our public hearings in a way, and I see there's quite a few folks here, with people with alternating opinions, pro and con. And if we could do it that way, we'll see how it goes. I don't know if the mix is that strong here, pro and con, but let's start with that and come forward, please. Ms. Latham. And just as a reminder, you'll have three minutes. When the yellow light goes on, you'll have about 30 seconds to wrap up. The council is a stickler on the time. We want to treat everybody the same way, so we may, you may not finish your thought, and we may have to cut you off, so try to be mindful of your time management, and then make sure you give us your full name and address. And if you need to use the overhead, Director Benner, I'll give you a handheld microphone to use.
Thank you. Two of us are sharing this PowerPoint presentation. I will lead off with the first part for the Valley View Road reconstruction objectives. We need a sidewalk on the north side from Macaulay to Raymar, ultimately going to the school.
Your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Diane Pluckett-Latham, 7013 Comanche Court.
Thank you.
Second, we need to correct present vegetation, traffic hazards, and third, provide a bicycle lane on Valley View. It is currently unsafe due to the steep hillside, which is why we need a sidewalk in this area. There's quite a bit of poison ivy. If a person tries to step off the roadway to avoid a cower in a poison ivy patch, state law requires its control, and the weed inspector should notify those three homeowners in that area. Next, how do I? It's not. Okay. So the question is not if, but when the sidewalk should go in. The permanent sidewalk is on Edina's comprehensive plan. It satisfies the safe routes to the school program, complies with the Edina's Green Step Cities Program. State aid pays for 80 percent, residents only 20, and state aid also sees that it's shoveled. The vegetation signage and traffic hazards must be corrected regardless of when the sidewalk or bike lanes are installed. I believe that the conifer hedge at 725 must be removed, along with a shrub at 7146, the lilac hedge at 7028, needless to say, the poison ivy. And the stop sign at 7028 must be correctly positioned. The city engineer has put a line on the street showing where you should stop. Here I am, stopped at that line. You can see it under the tire. As you look out the passenger window, you see the lilac hedge. As you look out the driver's window, that's the view, that's all you can see around the conifer hedge. Now, if I edge out into the street far enough so that I can see, get a better view around the conifer hedge, you can see how far out I am. This is an accident waiting to happen. This is the conifer hedge. The city engineer has staked the right-of-way. You see the stake in the lower left-hand corner, that is 20 feet. The city does have the right to remove that hedge. And when the permanent sidewalk comes in, would have to, because there's a three-foot grassy border plus a five-foot sidewalk. This is the shrub at 7146, which is overgrown. You see it by the mailbox, and even if you lean out beyond that conifer hedge, you can see the shrub is still hanging out there. Whether or not you put in any permanent or temporary sidewalk, that thing has got to get out of there. The lilac hedge at 7028, the same thing. This is looking down the street, and then you can see it out the passenger window. There is the stop sign, and the red dot shows where the stop sign is actually supposed to be. So that's out by a considerable distance. Okay. Regardless of when the sidewalk is reconstructed, all traffic hazards have to go. Residents should be reminded that city code prohibits planting in an area 20 feet from the travel portion of the street. If a resident wants privacy, the best way to achieve it is with a fence, because vegetation continuously grows will eventually obstruct traffic views. The city should not pay to replace vegetation, which was illegally planted in the right-of-way, but perhaps the city could obtain trees and pass them along at cost to residents, much like the city of Plymouth does for Arbor Day.
All right. Thank you.
Next, Richard Griffith will pick up with the part on the bike path.
Richard Griffith, 7009 Comanche Court. Reasons why Valley View needs to be striped for a bicycle lane. There's no protection for bicyclists competing in that area with cars. You don't want the bikes riding on any sidewalk. You also want children and adults to be able to bike along there. It's currently the only conduit between Edenbury and Edina down in that region. There's no marking on the street at this time. As part of our safe passage for kids, they need to be able to bike to school, energy-saving and building healthy bodies. I guess I just, here we are. Okay. Now, people who really are into cycling, I guess I include myself, really do use Valley View Hill for training. It's a very good workout to go from the bottom top of that, but of course, you're going down the other way, you exceed 15 miles an hour. So you don't want those cyclists riding on the sidewalk, you want them in the street. So again, you need a bike lane on that street. Bike lane is typically four feet minimum wide and is required on each side of the street. So you can see that our Edina plan calls for five foot minimum, but the min dot minimum is four feet. So those should be added to the street. We have a reference for these dimensions, if you'd like. So conclusions, temporary sidewalk cannot encroach two feet of street as proposed, or there won't be enough space for the bike lane. A permanent sidewalk will require a three-foot grass strip plus five-foot permanent sidewalk, all of which must be within the 20-foot city easement in order to allow. Bottom line is that the street down there, I think, is more kind of widened cow path, and it's been allowed to exist that way for 50 years. We need to make it into a full-time street and remove the hazard so that people can traverse it safely, both walking, biking, and with cars. And thank you for your attention.
All right. Thank you very much. Sure. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Doug Benner. I live at 7025 Sally Lane. It's at the corner of Sally Lane and Valley View, along with my wife Jill, daughter Betsy, and son Mike. I'd like to urge you to vote no on the temporary sidewalk issue. We moved into our home in large part because we thought the neighborhood was beautiful. The winding course of Valley View, the foliage that grows along the roadside made it seem like we were out in the country. And we chose our neighborhood partly because there weren't any sidewalks. A lot of residents in our neighborhood, and especially those along Valley View, have talked with me about the sidewalk. And I know I speak for many of them when I say that we're opposed to the temporary sidewalk. I'd like to offer six reasons to vote no. The first is, we do not want our tax dollars spent putting in a raised ribbon of asphalt that's intended to be temporary in nature, only to spend even more tax dollars removing it at some future date. Second, the temporary sidewalk would be unattractive. We've seen the picture sent by the city showing what it will look like, and to us, it's not a pretty sight. We just simply don't want that in our beautiful neighborhood. The third is, we do not want the effect that the sidewalk will create, which is namely that the already fast traffic on Valley View will become even faster. Our understanding is that a sidewalk will make the road seem visibly wider, and human nature being what it is, drivers will go faster, and our city engineers have confirmed this. And painting a white line between the road and the sidewalk won't change that, nor will having the sidewalk being raised. It's the fact that there's just a wider space where there's no foliage. And our neighborhood has already had to deal with the fact that traffic is fast and loud on Valley View, and on many occasions, drivers have gone so fast that they veered off the road. One of them was alluded to, hitting the Potts House. But also, drivers have knocked over landscaping, they've hit a mailbox, they've hit a shrub, and I guess we just don't want cars hitting our house, too. The fourth is installing a sidewalk, temporary or permanent, will destroy a good portion of many of our lawns. When the neighborhood was built, the positioning of our homes took into consideration the amount of lawn we have and to have a nice green space between the home and the road. The homes in the neighborhood, the dimensions of the lots and the landscaping on them were built around not having sidewalks, such that putting one in now after the area's been built is just not appropriate. The fifth is, we've heard that one reason for sidewalk is safety, but many of us feel that right now, there really isn't a safety concern. I'm a walker and runner. I run along Valley View all the time.
Mr. Benner, I need to have you finish up.
Pardon?
Yeah. Need to have you finish up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's all. I think you're actually out of time.
Okay. I'm sorry?
If you want to give me the last one and one word, go ahead as you leave the podium.
I'll just say, Mr. Sullivan's articulated the fact that 68 residents have signed that petition. Please hear your constituents. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Benner.
My name is Jill Benner. I live at 7025 Sally Lane, and I just want to make one point about the petition in 2004. That petition was presented to me, I was living in my home on Sally Lane at that time, and that petition was presented to us in the neighborhood as one that would be on the south side of Valley View, and that it would actually wrap around the frontage road to Courtney Park, so that those mothers in the neighborhood would have access, walkable access, to Courtney Park. So I really feel to speak of that 2004 petition and what you're discussing tonight, it's not the same sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benner.
My name is Robert Darwin. I live at 7144 Valley View Road, the exact area where the temporary sidewalk is proposed. I feel that will be a terrible eyesore. The picture that the city sent to us shows asphalt that'll essentially have a bump and a curb that goes up into the middle of my yard. I think our dollars could be spent better. All my grandkids, my children, live in the city. I know that we can spend this better right now and wait until we get a permanent fix, rather than have to go through two changes, putting it in, ripping it out. I heard some comments also about bikers. We have a tremendous number of bikers that go in my neighborhood all the time. I see them going by Valley View Road. I can see- I can see them very clearly. Maybe they can't see them like Comanche Court, but I see them go through there continuously. I see them go up Macaulay Road Lane. They're just there all the time. But I feel this would be a terrible waste of our resources here in Edina, and would be something that we would have to tear out and eventually put the permanent sidewalk in. So I would say no to this temporary addition. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Darwin. Sure. Mr. Darwin, could you hold on a moment? Member Swinson has a question.
I heard how you felt about a temporary sidewalk, but I didn't hear how you felt about a permanent sidewalk.
I would love to have curbs in my neighborhood. The sidewalk, I'm not particularly opposed to. I think it has to essentially go through all the plans, whether it makes sense if it eventually goes up further, maybe it would make sense, but I definitely would be in favor of a curb, not so much a sidewalk, but a curb for certain. And that's a cement curb.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Darwin.
Yes, sir.
My name is Stan Dobrin. I'm at 7001 Sally Lane.
Stand, repeat your name again and just kind of...
Stan Dobrin.
Thank you.
And we live at the corner of Sally and Paiute. We've lived at our home since 1971, 40 years, kind of hard to believe. And when we first moved in, there was a count of something like 105 children within about three square blocks. What's happened to the neighborhood is the neighborhood has gone through a whole, complete cycle, and now we're back to what I suspect is very close to that same number of little kids. And virtually all of them are now learning to ride their bikes, and that road, Valley View, with no sidewalk or no bike lane, is a tremendous hazard to a lot of very small children who are just learning to ride their bikes and are eager to go over to a park that is in their neighborhood that they can't get to safely. And I think that that is a real crime. And I also think that, like the looks of the sidewalk or not, it is only a temporary thing. The road should be fixed, it should be widened, and we should have a boulevard sidewalk, as staff has suggested ultimately. Obviously, we can't, we don't have the money to do that right now, but I suspect that spending some money to save a life possibly of a little kid on a bicycle is a whole lot better use than taking out some trees, where taking out some trees would be an issue. The other issue has to do with the visibility, and I can't tell you how often I've, how close I've come to getting hit coming out of Sally Lane onto Valley View. And I can tell you that every neighbor that I know of has had the same exact experience with people's... There hasn't been an accident that I'm aware of, but there's going to be. And it's only a matter of time, because you cannot see, because of the curvature of the road and the trees, something has to be done there before somebody gets hurt. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Dobrin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Pat Crumman, and I live at 7146 Valley View Road. I'm speaking in opposition to the sidewalk proposal, and if I might just put these two photographs, I think it just might help you a little bit.
Go ahead, Mr. Crumman.
I'm not sure the cameras...
Set it right in the middle there, and then they will give you a handheld microphone, too, if you want to.
Well, I'm hoping I'm talking loud enough.
We need to record you. It's not, we can hear you just fine, but we're recording this.
Just for the record, my lot is 49 feet wide and 41 feet long. The first photo shows where the bucket is, and that's going to be the edge of this new sidewalk. It's a total of 16 feet into the 41 feet of my front yard. And I'd asked the council members, would anyone like to have essentially 30 percent of their property ripped up for the sidewalk? I think the standard answer would be no. I think it also changes the character of the neighborhood. I've lived in Edina for 57 years. I'd asked the council members, how many sidewalks are there throughout Indian Hills? There are none. I'm just, for example, you know what? The Country Club area has sidewalks. The area that was built, it didn't have sidewalks. Neighbors have grandkids, many people live in the neighborhood with young children. People ride bikes, I ride bikes, but I just think this is a bad idea.
Thanks, Mr. Crumman.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I got the green light. Okay, my name is Pat Lewis. I live at the corner of Valley View Road and Cheyenne Trail. And I am assuming that McCauley Trail that you're talking about, where the beginning of the sidewalk is going to be on the north side of Valley View, if you go through McCauley Trail north, across Valley View, you're going to, if you don't take a left or a right, you're in my driveway. And I'm trying to make sure that that's correct. Is, Mr. Sullivan, is that correct?
Sir, could you please restate that? We're trying to visually...
McCauley Trail, coming down from St. Pat's Church. The first turn to the right...
Valley View.
Valley View, excuse me. Yeah. The first turn to your right is Cheyenne Trail. Is that the beginning of the sidewalk?
No, it would start down at the large oak tree down at the intersection of the Hairpin Corner by Hillary and Brimar Boulevard.
Well, I got it. I received some information that said that, from the city, we died on, that says that you receive this notice is that your property, as ownership is listed, is among those properties within the project area.
Yeah. You would not be in the potentially affected area or the area that would be encompassed with the sidewalk petition.
I'm not.
You are not.
So I've wasted my time.
Yeah, you're, yeah, right. You may be in the notice area, but you're not in the sidewalk area.
Excuse me.
Folks.
Well, I'm against it anyway, so I'll go on record.
What we want you to know is that when we send out notice, we send it out to a large area, not just everyone on Valley View, so that everyone knows what's happening in their area. You're within the notice area, so it was great that you read it and that you came in, and so I really appreciate that. But it doesn't mean because you're in the notice area that, for instance, we're not putting it down Sally and we're not putting it down Comanche Court. It's along Valley View.
I'm in the project area.
And we're not going down Valley View by Cheyenne Trail.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Actually, thanks, Mr. Kell, Mr. Lewis. All right. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Good morning, council members. My name is Hazem Obaid. I live at 7024 Sally Lane. We've been there since 97. We raised our kids. We have grandkids. I don't think it's a good thing to let kids go to school from where we live up the hill. There's no place for either a sidewalk or a bike place. And if we allow a sidewalk or a walking place or a biking place as proposed, it doesn't lead to anywhere. You can't even cross over to Brimar. You can't go for that, like 100 feet between the sidewalk, cross over down the hill and cross the street over to the sidewalk on the other side. You can't cross over to Valley View by the highway. So what's the point of having a sidewalk in a limited area that does not continue up going to school? I wouldn't necessarily allow my kids or my grandkids to go up that hill on a bike or down the hill. The other thing is, I don't think we, as neighbors, should have the city come in and tell us, cut your trees, trim your shrubs, and do things like that. Maybe neighbors should have a better attitude and have a neighborly talk and do things in between them and not with city orders. But I'm definitely against having the sidewalk and would rather have probably a safer street for driving. Most of us would take our bikes and go to a biking place or drive over and jog or walk somewhere else, not necessarily over from our house to the final destination. Thank you. I would urge you to vote no for this project.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carl Falsted. I live at 5709 Bernard Place. I'm here to speak in favor of the sidewalk and hopefully a bike lane as well along that piece of road. I moved to Edina just four years ago, so I'm still learning a lot of the neighborhoods, but the neighborhood we're talking about tonight is refreshingly familiar to me. I live just about a mile south of Jerry's, not far from here, but I work in Eden Prairie. And instead of taking Crosstown down 169 to work, I cut through that very beautiful neighborhood that people are talking about, and it's a very relaxing way to start my day and to, and when I come home, commute through it. My son also plays baseball at Brimar, though, and my wife and I, ambitious, and I actually walk that. We can't walk Valley View. We have to cut through Sally Lane. And the reason we don't walk Valley View is that that's just, I mean, it's a race course up and down, up and down that right road for the same reason that I enjoy driving it earlier in the day. I really would like to see sidewalks put in, at least a part of the area we're talking about this evening. If there's any way we can accommodate a bike lane, I would ask for your support of that as well. There's been a lot of attention given lately to bike education, furthering kind of the bike-friendly approach that Edina has had to its residents, and I hope we can continue to move forward with that with this project. And I think particularly bordering on a park where a lot of kids play, it's important to be very, very friendly to multiple modes of transportation to get there. The kids are going to want to bike, they're going to want to bike Valley View, and I think it's such a beautiful walk, I'd like to encourage people to walk on a sidewalk through that neighborhood as well. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Falsted.
Hi, my name is Wayne Alexander. I live at 7028 Sally Lane. That's the corner of Sally Lane and Valley View. And yeah, I'm the guy everybody hates. I've got the lilacs. But as a 35-year-old of my property, I've never seen a real need for a sidewalk there. I raised a daughter. I've never had any problems. It's the sidewalk that goes nowhere. It makes no sense. Is it the best way to spend our money? A sidewalk that will only be there for two years to six years? The money just seems so wasteful. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Alexander.
My name is Larry Nesbit. I live at 7132 Valley View Road, right on the front, where all you're talking about. We've lived there for 28 years. We've raised our children there. They took the bus every day. It's 30 years on Edina, and I would like to see anybody in that area that has their children walk to school. It's almost two miles, depending on where you are. If you do sidewalks, my son and my dog and I walk every night on Sally Lane, Paiute Pass, Sioux Trail. The reason why we don't go the other way is because walking by the golf course is boring. I walk for my heart, so I want to go up and down the hills. I am concerned when you're widening the road, what's going to happen to my property values. You're going to take some of my front lawn. I don't have a big front lawn. Our houses are already difficult to sell, because of the volume of traffic. With 169 and 494, the way it is, the volume has increased. It did decrease when the frontage road went through. That was terrific. I could actually back out of my driveway without taking my life in my hands by an 18-wheeler or something like that. So I would urge you not to do everything that you're doing. We don't want you to spend the money on a temporary sidewalk. We'd like you to spend the money to do it right in the future. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mr. Nesbit.
Good evening, chairman and council members. My name is Brad Sheffy from 4600 Bruce Avenue. I obviously don't live in the impacted area. I just have two comments I'd like to make. One is, I'm not sure if the design is complete, but perhaps there's a compromise where you can have, you know, a stripe, and then outside of that stripe, there's area for walking or biking, not necessarily both, where you could facilitate public policy, but also, you know, not encroach too much on the neighbor's lawn. I don't know if that's, if it's too late or if that's an option, but just a thought. My second point is that I do live in Country Club and decided to buy into the neighborhood because of how walkable it is. As you all know, there's just a tremendous amount of people who are walking and biking in that neighborhood, and there's also a tremendous amount of recent investment, people adding on to homes, completely remodeling homes. And so, as a public policy, I think we have to, we either look at each of these little projects separately, or we decide, you know, what's the direction Edina wants to go for public policy, and, in my opinion, what I see the investment into our neighborhood really has to do with how friendly it is to walk and bike. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Sheffy.
Good morning, mayor. Hello, everybody.
Daryl Demming. I live on 7027 McCauley Trail, right on the corner of McCauley and Valley View. Listening to all the conversations that I've heard before I came up here, it seems to me we've got a lot of things we're trying to get done here. We want bike paths, we want sidewalks, we want trees so that we have safe egresses to get down Sally Lane. All I would ask that you guys consider is, number one, is this really the best way we should be doing this? And like the gentleman before me said, I think, you know, Edina does things right. I've heard it, we've heard it all along. We need to do this right, too, and it's not by just throwing a strip of asphalt down and saying, okay, we've got this in here temporarily, and we'll hopefully be able to have a, you know, a nice sidewalk and a comprehensive plan done, something that would meet the needs for another 30 or 40 years. In my business, hope is not a business strategy, and I would like to see a little more concrete saying that there's going to be something done that's saying, hey, this is going to actually happen, instead of just having a temporary piece of sidewalk, of asphalt. I take great pride in what my yard looks like, and I just don't see how this is going to enhance the overall look. I still haven't seen a real comprehensive of what this sidewalk is going to look and how it affects me personally, because I actually have curb all the way around my property, and it ends at my driveway. So I'm a little bit confused, and I would probably ask for more information, because I'm a little bit confused, and I don't know if you all have more information than I have. But I don't think there's a lot more questions that need to be answered here before we run into something and have it done as quickly as we, it appears to me that we've done right now, or we're proposing to do. So I strongly urge you to vote no.
Thanks, Mr. Demming.
My name is Buddy Howell. I live at 7135 Valley View Road. I don't consider myself to be an expert or very well acquainted with public procedures, so excuse me if I don't have it just right. I do consider myself somewhat knowledgeable, common sense. From where I stand, I do agree that we have multiple projects going on here. It seems like we're using a sidewalk to rid ourselves of shrubs that some people don't like, trees that some people don't like. But consider this, if you were a homeowner, you'd like to be considered first, I think. In that, you might say, somebody knocks on the door at City Hall and says, I'd like to have a sidewalk. I'm not sure what the process was, but I know what it wasn't. Nobody came to me with a survey saying, we'd like to have a sidewalk. What do you think about the sidewalk? Wouldn't that be common sense in light of what's going on tonight? We have a lot of people against, we have a lot of people for. But if you asked the homeowners, what do you think? And then shared the information that you had, it might guide you better. That's basically what I have to say, other than, I've raised my children, we've been in the house for 25 years, we haven't had the problems. So I urge you to vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Ellen Jones. I live at 5261 Locklloyd Drive in Edina, and I'm here just to talk to you about my hopes for this project, in that I know that blue-ribbon communities combine bike trails and pedestrian trails in a very beautiful manner, so that the homeowners that live by those trails are happy with the outcome, and they feel that their property values are enhanced by what has been done. And so, my hope is that whatever is decided tonight, it combines these types of things. My second point is that I really hope that we include the thought of safe access to our parks and schools and churches. There are two churches nearby, there are three schools nearby, and Courtney Fields... And then shared the information that you had, it might guide you better. That's basically what I have to say. Other than, I've raised my children, we've been in the house for 25 years, we haven't had the problems. So I urge you to vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Howell.
Hi, I'm Ellen Jones. I live at 5261 Locklloyd Drive in Edina. And I'm here just to talk to you about my hopes for this project, in that I know that blue-ribbon communities combine bike trails and pedestrian trails in a very beautiful manner, so that the homeowners that live by those trails are happy with the outcome. And they feel that their property values are enhanced by what has been done. And so, my hope is that whatever is decided tonight, it combines these types of things. My second point is that I really hope that we include the thought of safe access to our parks, and schools, and churches. There are two churches nearby, there are three schools nearby, and Courtney Fields, as well as Bramar, as well as Creek Valley Park. All of these are so close that it would be nice for a parent to be able to say, I can route you a safe path to, is this the red light? Is that my stop? I'd like to route you a safe path to the parks from the schools or from your home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Yes?
Wait for the green light? Okay. My name's Tom Bach, 7627 Gleason Road. And I'll keep this short, because it says nothing, not to repeat, points have already been made, but I just want to say I'm opposed to this for a couple of reasons. One, I think it's a waste of taxpayer money. We've got a project with very, very little identified benefits. It's a sidewalk that starts nowhere, it goes nowhere, it starts at a highway, ends at a tree, doesn't make any sense. I think the point that a longer-term solution may be in order, I think that's a good thing we should study. I think the residents who have property along the sidewalks should be surveyed. So I don't think the process has really been followed very well. But I think, you know, a long-term solution may be good when it's funded and the state money's available, if it's ever available. Third, environmentally, I think it's a disaster. There's going to be 70, 100 trees, bushes, shrubs, beautiful foliage removed for no purpose other than, it seems like what's happening here, some residents who don't like the foliage are trying to jam through a sidewalk to solve that problem. If these, and Jack, I think you said, these are compliant in terms of setbacks and things? If they're compliant, they're compliant. If they're not, that should be fixed. But the solution shouldn't be to put a sidewalk in and waste taxpayer money to solve some irritation that the residents have. So, as a taxpayer, I'm opposed to this. I think it's a waste of money.
Thank you, Spock. Anyone else? Okay. See no one standing or coming forward? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
All right. Move in second, we close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right. Some interesting notions here by various folks in our community, and both in favor of it and opposed to it. Is there anyone that wants to lead off with some thoughts or concerns? Members Swenson?
There was a question by the resident that lives on the corner of McCauley and Valley View that already has curb, and he wanted to know what it would look like in front of his house, so I think we need to answer that.
That's located in the northeast corner of that intersection. Because there's already curb and gutter there, our anticipation would be that we'd make a boulevard-style sidewalk through that section, much like we have in the remainder of our community, where we are now trying to do that five-foot grass boulevard and the five-foot walk there. So it would actually pull away from the street and be a little further behind the curb at that location.
And then what would that section be made out of?
That would still be an asphalt section as well.
And then, there was two questions, one about the connection going to Courtney Fields along the crossover Valley View and 169, and then, would you be able to get across at the corner of Valley View at the bottom at the oak tree? Would there be sidewalk that would then link up with the Bramar?
I think it'd be difficult in this project to get that sidewalk link from the oak tree down to the Hillary Lane. It's a narrower section in there, there's a drainage swale on the west side. We could look at reconfiguring that. Currently, that's kind of a Y-intersection there. We could look to reconfigure that as well. Maybe we move one of those legs to make that the sidewalk. But it wasn't the intent originally to extend that down with this limited project, to be the all-encompassing project in the future.
No, I know, but one of the questions was, it's a sidewalk starting nowhere, going nowhere. Now, we've had some of those that start nowhere and link up with a piece of sidewalk that we did three years earlier, because we tend to work on sidewalks in sections. So, you know, I just wondered, is it possible to, at least if this goes through, connect one of the sections to something that makes more sense?
Yeah, we could certainly look into that. Yes, we could on the east side. I think it would be more convenient on the east side. The west side, as you talked about, has that longer leg down to the interchange, would be more difficult to make that connection at that location.
Please, folks, no talking. This hearing is closed. The discussion is now at the council.
I think that's the only questions I recognize that came in. Maybe somebody else might have one.
I had one here that, I wasn't so worried about Mr. Demming's property, but I think it's good that you asked the questions, so Mr. Demming understood. But there is a concern about the location of the sidewalk crossing Pat Fornin's yard. And it looked like he had a red bucket that was fairly deep into his yard, and I was wondering where the proposed sidewalk would actually go across his yard relative to where he had the red bucket. Guess that's a good way to ask it.
The project we're proposing would just be about two to three feet behind the existing edge of travel lane today. The more comprehensive project would extend the sidewalk further into his yard. I'm not sure what the distance to that bucket was, but that would be debated based on the concern with bike lanes or other side, you know, bike lanes and other issues like that.
Okay, all right. Did anyone else catch a question that they wanted to ask staff about? Let me look at my list one more time.
Mayor, I just have a general question. Why did staff support this project? It says they feel the project's necessary, cost-effective, and feasible. What's necessary, what's cost-effective?
Councilmember Sprague in council. When we were petitioning in 2004 for this sidewalk, we were anticipating a full-blown project, that we'd have a boulevard-style sidewalk, we'd correct the hairpin turn, and we'd have a good connection down to Bramar Park essentially, or down by the golf course, Hillary Lane. When we look back, as Jack says, through time, we don't have the funds to do it at this time. However, we're still getting the pressure from the neighborhood that people are for the sidewalk, to staff, not to you folks, but to staff, to do something there. So, since this had been sitting there since 2004, we didn't have an answer back to the neighborhood. We wanted to raise the issue, bring it forward to you folks, and say, this is about the best that we can do, given the economic situation that we have with our state aid dollars. And if you want to do it, here's a temporary sidewalk. Could we use the money elsewhere in the city? Absolutely. I mean, right now, we're fighting potholes after this last winter. We could use that $80,000 to do thin overlays on roadways that we don't have on our reconstruction map. So, from a staff point of view, we could use the money elsewhere. But as from a neighborhood, we do see that there is a need to have some area to separate the pedestrians from the vehicles that are on the roadway, even if it's a raised, vituminous surface like they have in Oakland Road in Minnetonka that's been there for 20 years. So, that's why we proposed it. We wanted to raise the issue, flush it out with the neighbors, ask them, what do you think, in a public setting, to go on the record, and then let you five folks vote on it.
Okay. So the origin of this was actually with the neighbors. I think that was one of Mr. Howell's questions, was, you know, no one knocked on his door, or one of his comments, no one knocked on his door and asked him to support the petition. But there were folks in the neighborhood that apparently supported a sidewalk along Valley View, at least in 2004.
That's correct. Well, I'm not sure if anybody knocked on his door, but we did have an informational meeting last fall, and then we also had one early June here. And the reason why we didn't do it till June is that we were basically humping to get all of our construction projects out the door and underbid and under contract. So this was next on the list, from the engineering staff point of view, to look at.
Okay. Other questions for staff? Otherwise, is anybody? Let's handle it this way, let's see if we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2011-70. This might take care of some of the discussion here. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2011-70 to install a sidewalk on Valley View from McCauley Trail to Hillary Lane?
Mr. Mayor?
No.
No, sir. This matter is concluded with respect to the public. We already had the public hearing. No.
I do not understand that I could ask him questions.
You cannot ask him questions.
Oh, I would just say my point.
Yep.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2011-70?
I'd at least like to discuss it. So I guess I would move it so we could discuss it.
All right, we have a motion.
If that's what you'd like to do.
This was put, and no trouble. And they don't.
Wait a minute. I asked you to please refrain from speaking, because we have closed the public hearing. We had public testimony, we had notice, we've had good discussion by the neighborhood, and now the matter is back in front of the council for a council discussion. The time for having public participation is past. Now, we're trying to deal with this issue up here on the dais amongst the council members without any further input from the public. That's the way the process works. Thank you. All right.
You know, if to discuss it, we need a motion, then I'll make a motion, because I'd like us to discuss it.
All right. Is there?
Then I'm happy to second it, so that we can start our discussion.
Okay. Now, let's do a discussion in a more formal way. Members Sprague?
I have a lot of issues with the motion. First of all, I don't find this to be necessary now. And I think Mrs. Plunkett-Latham said it best, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. When is not the time, there's no demonstrated need. The data shows that street volumes have decreased since the sidewalk was originally petitioned. The speed is less, basically about the posted speed limit of 30. And there's no other immediate hazard that anyone has demonstrated that would make us push this project up ahead of everyone else who's waiting in the queue for state aid funding. If there were some immediate hazard, maybe we'd break with our tradition and break from plan. But I don't think we can do that here, I don't think the data supports that. I don't think it's a good precedent to start venturing into short-term infrastructure decisions either. There are other neighborhoods that could come forward and say, you know, we have a dangerous segment as well, and we don't want to wait. And so why can't we get funding like you got on the other side? And how would we differentiate the case? There is no way. There's a neighborhood behind me, I live on 70th Street on the southeast quadrant, the south part of Cornelia is landlocked. On the south side, 77th Street, you cannot exit the neighborhood at all. And there are some key segments listed in the comp plan for, I don't know if those are for reconstruction in the future, if those have already passed by and they didn't vote them in. But either way, their circumstances would warrant us to push them up if we adopted the same logic. So it's not necessary. It's also not cost-effective, $90,000 in the current, even not under the current financial conditions. We have other higher and better uses for the money. For one, we're trying to make Edina, and I think there's a uniform desire on the council, to make Edina more walkable and more bikeable. We have just recommissioned our ETC, our Edina Transportation Commission, to work on this endeavor with a new living streets policies that is going to be developed and funding to follow. And if we want to change attitudes about sidewalks, I don't think we do that by wasting money now. We have to be prudent with our use of dollars. In terms of the landscaping issue that came up, I'm a little bit confused. I look at our ordinance, which is 1200, let's see if I can find it here, Section 1200, Use and Maintenance of Streets. 1200.02, it says, prohibited encumbrances or obstructions, except as provided in subdivision two of the section. No person shall obstruct, dot, dot, dot. The right-of-way width, and B says fences or landscaping. Landscaping is not defined, but landscaping in the, you know, the normal use of the term would mean any landscaping, certainly would mean trees, if it means soft scape on the ground. So this is clearly not allowed in the right-of-way. The remedy for this in 1200.05, which is entitled Abatement of Nuance, is that it is by the ordinance declared a nuisance, and with seven days' written notice, the city can remove or abate the notice and assess the cost of removal. Now, we have a practice with staff in not, I guess, not enforcing the ordinance, not noticing people and assessing the cost. I also question that practice. It's actually kind of a perverse incentive for people to say, you can't plant in the right-of-way, but if you do it, do it really big, and then you'll get some money to take it out. That does not make sense from a public policy point of view. And I would suggest that we bring this topic up in the future. How are we going to deal with the fact that much of the city, including my house, is planted in the right-of-way? And what's going to be our approach? If we're not going to rip it out and follow our own ordinance, then we need to make some exceptions and come up with some rules to guide our practices. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Members Sprague. Member Bennett?
I think we, as a community, do many things well. And we do that in part because we begin with process, we do involve residents, we do ask for input. We then use that input for design, in the best cases, and then for problem-solving. This is a process that has been a little stop-start, and I think we've had our sequence in a different order. And as a consequence, I think we've arrived at a point where we're contemplating a fairly, a pretty expensive temporary solution. I think that there are times when a temporary solution is necessary and effective, but I don't think this is one of them. I agree that it's not. We do need a network, a workable network in this community. And I don't want to lose what we've already been doing to build that network, public education, the pieces of the network that we've already approved. I don't want to lose public trust and public faith in our ability to do that well by approving something that's not a good segment of it. And for that reason, I don't support this temporary solution. I do support continuing the work that we've been doing with a good network.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
I have a number of notes. I guess my first instinct is to look at priorities. And there are enough, a number of issues around this intersection that go beyond the proposal that we have in front of us. Matter of fact, the priorities that I hear about from a number of the people who are sitting here this evening, as well as people who are not here this evening, have nothing to do with the sidewalk. Now, the fact that a sidewalk would be part of the permanent reconstruction of Valley View, that's fine. We've got time to consider where it ought to go, we have time to consider all of those things, but it certainly doesn't need to be part of a temporary solution right now. What does need to be solved is the clear view. And I deal with it on a daily basis, and several of us here deal with it on a daily basis. Now, those residents who live at the corner of Sally Lane and Valley View, it's a tough spot. It's a tough spot when it's your property, when it's your privacy. And it's a tough spot when you're a driver, when you're a teenage driver, when you're a little kid on a bike. It's a tough, it's a very tough spot. It's, suffice to say, depending upon how close the lilacs and the evergreens, particularly the ones right at the corner, encroach into the clear view zone, it's a major safety issue. I think that Diane, in the illustration with the car, that wasn't exaggerated at all. If, and I don't know if we can, Mr. Sullivan, if we can put up a graphic of what Valley View Road looks like in that area? Because it's not straight. It's definitely not straight. Valley View Road slopes in at Comanche Court. So when there's a car who is at the intersection of Comanche Court and Valley View Road, if you are sitting at the stop sign at Sally Lane and Valley View, and you want to turn left, you are not going to see that car. You are not going to see that car until it makes the turn through that blind area, comes out beyond the mailbox with the U Evergreen, and out beyond the mailbox with the U Evergreen, and is visible. And at that point is when, all of a sudden, these two cars see each other, and you have a situation where one feels that the other is in the other's right-of-way. So it is a tense situation. We totally understand it. To me, that is the priority we should be dealing with at this point. A sidewalk notwithstanding, I see it in our future, and that's fine with me, but it is a priority issue with me at this point, and I think that's the priority.
Thank you.
Staff, I understand that there is advantage to our impact on driver behavior with more limited sightlines. It makes people cautious because they're not sure what's around that corner. Where is the balance? Do we know from an engineering perspective where the balance is between helping people feel appropriately cautious, given where it is that they're driving, and having really great visibility? Because I would think that the neighborhood would not want to lose, that they would want that balance. You would not want to lose something that's going to slow people down, and at the same time, people obviously have to be safe as they're leaving their driveways and traversing the roads, and as they're on foot and bicycle.
Member Bennett, there's no magic number out there, but, you know, this, as indicated before, is a very curvilinear section of roadway. If you're heading westbound, you're approaching a stop sign location. There's enough other queues, I think, that you can still achieve that sense of tightness and caution with other measures, just the driveways there, like the curvilinear nature, the stop sign ahead that's coming up. I think a lot of those things can all add into that, so it's more of a qualitative and less quantitative, so I can't answer your question with a hard and fast number.
Members Swenson?
Just a comment to that and then my comments. I guess if you don't know the neighborhood and you're on Valley View, you don't realize what the sightline issues are trying to pull out of Sally. So whether a hedge causes people to slow down, my guess would be if you don't know that the hedge covers you from someone pulling out on Sally Lane, which I did today just to test it, it wouldn't really make a difference. I guess I'm torn on this. I don't see the value, listening to my council members and the residents, of a temporary sidewalk. I do see a value of a sidewalk. I hear from many of you that you really don't want a sidewalk, so saying you don't want a temporary sidewalk is a really good way of not having a sidewalk right now. I think that we need to connect the ballfields, Braemar, and the golf course with the sidewalk. Do I think this is maybe too long to walk up to the high school unless you were my vintage and we walked to and from the school four times a day and then you whine about it to your children? It probably is too long. But I think this is a section that is different, for instance, than the section that Member Sprague talked about, because it has 24,000 cars going by it a day. Is that what you told me? Twenty-four hundred and seven hundred, is that, where is where you put a sidewalk then? Because I just added extra zeros.
We typically look at 750 as kind of a threshold.
Okay, I added extra zeros. But the difference between 700 and 2,400, to me, is a considerable amount. I appreciate also the engineering department being honest. They're trying to bring forward something that has been languishing from 2004. I mean, we're disappointing a lot of people that we committed to doing this and that we've been working on it, and that makes me feel bad because all those kids and all those families are just getting older and new families, you're right, are moving in because I drove down that neighborhood today in the middle of summer. There's a lot of kids there. I'd like it to connect to Braemar, and I'd like it to connect to the ballfields, and I'd like it to be a permanent plan, I guess, and I understand what you're telling me about that money being able to be used for patching roads right now, which we get a lot of comments about the roads. And so I support a sidewalk there. I guess I'm hesitant to support a temporary sidewalk, but I am supportive of Member Brindle's clear view issue. I think you do have an issue there, and I guess maybe we need to take care of that separately before the sidewalk goes in.
Thank you. Members Swenson. Members Sprague, you got another?
Just one real quick comment, Member Swenson. Clear view, I wouldn't be using that term technically because clear view is met at that intersection according to staff, is that correct? It's more of a sightline issue.
Okay, I'm sorry, I picked it up from Member Brindle.
It is a sightline issue and a hazard.
And I understand the difference of that. Thank you for the correction.
Okay, good. Thanks. Well, I'm glad you made the point, Member Swenson, that, and I'll reiterate this, this is not a staff recommendation. You know, oftentimes, we'll get a staff recommendation that's supported by people in the community. The staff really did want to know what the neighborhood thought, and that would help the council make a decision. And I think that's helped a great deal here as we look at this issue. And I don't support it, but don't be misled by that sort of negative assessment on my part. I do think that Mr. Sheppi that you heard from Bruce is the future, and that we noticed the same thing when we worked on the bikeway, on the recreational trail, that younger people moving into a community are going to be looking for ways to engage in non-motorized transportation, whether it's on foot or on bike. And so this council and other councils that come after we're done with our work are going to be looking at strategies to build out our city, and I think wisely so, to make us, hopefully, the most walkable community in the metro. And I think if we can say that we're the most walkable community in the metro, it's going to enhance everybody's property values, which goes to what Ms. Jones said about making sure that it enhances property values. And she sits, for example, on our park board, and so she's looking at these issues on a regular basis. I don't, you know, this is the first time we've ever addressed this temporary issue, and my knee-jerk reaction hasn't changed. This is not a good use of taxpayer money. And when we do this, and I think we need to do it at some point in time, we need to do it right. And I'd like to relook carefully at the south side, which I think is easier to navigate than that area right around Mr. Howell's house and the hill there with all the poison ivy. I think it makes more sense to be doing it on the south side where you get better connectivity to Braemar and all the ballparks and everything else that's up there. So what I am concerned about, though, over there is safety, and as we, even though the 169-494 project is stalled out right now because of the impasse at the state legislature, I am concerned about us trying to make reasonable efforts to try to reroute traffic around Braemar Ice Arena down the Frontage Road to the extent that's possible, as opposed to having truck traffic or any other kind of heavy traffic going down Valley View. So to the extent that we can influence that, and especially with the heavy trucks, we need to keep them out of the neighborhood to the extent possible. That's actually what we did on 70th Street. We told Target, don't run your trucks down 70th Street. We don't want them going down that way. Come in a different way. So we'll look at some of those issues. I also think frankly, a raised sidewalk, the way it's depicted, to me, could create a false sense of security for someone that's walking, and that's another reason that I oppose it. So the sightline issues, I don't know what to think about that. We've faced those in some other areas where we've trimmed them back when they've caused problems. I understand fully why folks in that neighborhood have those conifer, those arborvitae barriers. It gives them some privacy from a street that gets some fairly heavy traffic, but nonetheless, you're in the right-of-way. And we've taken the position, I think, up on Valley View by the community center, where we're putting in a new sidewalk. And sidewalks have to start somewhere, folks. You know, you start a plan sometimes when it doesn't look like it makes any sense, and you link it up later, and we did that up on Interlochen here. But we need to be thinking about sidewalk connectivity through that whole area. So that sightline issue, I don't know quite how to address that yet. I haven't developed a level of comfort there on how to deal with it. I hate to direct staff to go in there and tear out those arborvitae or give somebody, as Member Sprague says, a certain amount of time to take it down. This is a troublesome issue for me. And up by Valley View by the school, as I recall, we're taking out some material there that a guy has in his yard at our expense. We may be replacing it, strike that. I don't know if we're replacing it. I think he probably has to replace it, but to the extent that we might be able to get material and sell it to somebody at cost, that might be something we'd want to think about, too, so that the burden isn't quite as significant. So there's a little bit of reflection in my mind left to be done on this sightline issue, but I would be opposed to the temporary sidewalk and want to look at this whole thing on a more comprehensive basis, you know, over a little bit longer period of time with a lot of neighborhood and community input on that project. So I think we've got a common opinion up here. All those in favor of Resolution 2011-70 say aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Your Honor, I would support Member Sprague's suggestion that we have some kind of process and study on the right-of-way issue, because it has been raised before, as you pointed out, on the Valley View segment near Concord Elementary School. And I think that there is some question of understanding of the ordinance, again, public education. I think there is practice, and then we want to make sure that as a city, we're being clear and that we're also being consistent in the way that we interpret and enforce our ordinances. So I would welcome some kind of work session or study process on that.
Let's put that on our list, and I had one other point I wanted to make, too. I see Member Brindle would like to make a point as well.
Yeah, this was the topic of my council comment a couple meetings ago, is that we do need to educate the public, because this was the intersection I was referring to, and the arborvita hedge and the evergreens. That's exactly the spot I was referring to when I said, there will be tears, there really will be.
The other thing that I'm concerned about is safety in your neighborhood, and I'm going to reiterate, my idea is that we look at a solar-powered stop sign at McCauley and Valley View, and some sort of a pre-warning, that's right by Mr. Demings' house, a pre-warning sign to the south there that tells people they're going to come to a stop sign shortly, or some kind of a flashing light, solar-powered is fine by me. And then to the north, I think we really need to try to figure out how to slow people down, and I think the idea of looking at a solar-powered speed indicator like we have over by Cornelia School would be appropriate, because there's some fast travel there on McCauley Trail. I don't think people are sensitive to the notion that they're in a residential neighborhood, especially in the PM peak when people are racing around that part of town trying to figure out how to get home and cutting through your neighborhood. So those are the two supplemental ideas that I had. Members Bragg?
Just one quick follow-up. Again, I'm not, maybe the ordinance is too draconian, if that's what you're suggesting about enforcement, but it is on the books. So if we have an ordinance on the books that we don't like, we need to change the ordinance. The way we're doing it now, staff is, as I said, the perverse incentives there, and staff is doing it with maybe one house and not another, and when you have disparate practices, it does not look good to the public. We want to be consistent across the board. And my thought was maybe there is a way to get some of these exceptions worked in so that we don't have to have an, trying to enforce something that, or not enforce something that's on the books.
I have a question. From my six years of experience here, and the mayor has more, what I've noticed is it's usually by complaint that you go out to check sightlines and click in the space, and then you work with whoever it is to rectify it. Isn't that correct?
That, yeah, council, that is correct. We are on a complaint basis. However, what we look at is that we look at the clear view zone, which is 30 feet back from the intersection, which is 1405 of the city code. As far as the sightlines down the street, to my knowledge, there's only one time in my career here that has been enforced, and that was a neighbor against neighbor for sightlines coming out of their driveway. To my knowledge, we have not had people trim back their trees because they can't see down the street outside of that clear view zone. So like I say, we, I like the idea of going through, reviewing what a process and procedure is, because if you're looking at this intersection, there's probably another 100 intersection, maybe that's an exaggeration, but there's a lot of intersections that would have the same type of characteristics as you're looking at at this intersection. And how does staff go out there and, so if you get one complaint or two complaints, do we react to that? And now we have a clear cut right-of-way, and then we next have speeding issues, everything else that goes with it.
Okay. So what I hear you say is that you wouldn't mind a clear direction?
That's right. Yes, thank you.
Did I attach the right word to that?
I know we faced this issue a couple of years ago over in Member Brindle's neighborhood where we had some sightliner, clear view issues, and there was some thing, there was some material that was trimmed, as I recall.
This is exactly what we're talking about tonight. That's the same intersection.
They weren't removed, but they were trimmed.
They were trimmed.
And now maybe they need to be trimmed again.
And I have a corner in my neighborhood that periodically has to be trimmed because it's an older couple and you can't see, and mine happens to be a block away from an elementary school, but it's dangerous.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming tonight. I apologize, I should have maybe explained the process first so that it would have been more understandable, and I was a little bit quick on the trigger with regard to council, my apologies. So, thank you. All right. Thank you, folks, and for coming out tonight and giving us some guidance on this issue. The next matter on the agenda is community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to share a concern or raise an issue with the council that hasn't been considered in the past 30 days or isn't announced for future consideration? Or isn't on the agenda tonight? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the next section of the agenda, which is reports and recommendations. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 20169, accepting various donations?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor of adopting the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Carry. Donations this period are to the Edina Arts Center, Edina Fire Department, and the Edina Park Department, and there's one particular donation that we want to note. And Bill, I don't know, you want to come forward and tell the council and the folks in our community a little bit about the donation from Kevin Comodina? I think it's quite significant, and folks in the community should hear it from someone on the Arts Center Board and the Public Art Committee. Thanks. Please give us your name and address.
Bill McCabe, 6124 Hanson Road, Chair of the Edina Arts Center Board. The donation is a sculpture that is currently installed on the promenade. It was part of the competition last year and was accepted for exhibition, and the artist, Kevin Comodina, has donated it, and that is, was on your agenda tonight, acceptance.
In the name of it, so someone might recognize it.
Three Trees.
Thank you.
Three Trees ceramic sculpture. That's a beautiful piece.
Very nice sculpture. Beautiful.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay? Carry. Maybe we already did that. Thank you for the belt and suspenders approach. We really want to make sure those donations are clearly adopted, clearly accepted. All right. Correspondence and petitions. Anything other than what's been on the dais for us this evening? Manager Neil? All right, good. Mayor, council comments. We're going to start with Mr. Sprague this evening.
Okay. First of all, Manager Neil or Director Hall, just looking for an update on the Minnehaha Woods issue with regard to one inch versus one-half inch spec for the water lines.
Yep, I can take that. Councilmember Sprague and council, there was two individuals out in the Minnehaw Woods that we were aware of that wished to actually upgrade their water service. As we recall, in this project, we're replacing the water mains and all the services on the project, and our standard is when we do that is that we upgrade what is typically a three-quarter inch service to a inch service to a one-inch service. The request that the two individuals had was to bump it up to one and a half inch service. The old plumbing code does not take into account the current fixture sizing, and as I understand it, the building department does have the ability to be using the International Plumbing Code for future water main service sizing. What I'm referring to is that, if you recall, your toilets, your showerheads are all low flows now. You can't technically or legally install a higher-flow type of appliance or fixture. So your flows overall are going down in the community. So what, from a staff level, we've made a one inch as a standard, because it does serve a typical home, single-family home in Edina. If you do install a large service, let's say if you go to a one and a half inch service, what that typically will do is it'll lead you to a taste, odor, and potentially low chlorine levels in the water, because that water sits in the line longer, and so the bacteria will eat up the chlorine, and so then you have those other issues that go with it, because there's not that, the flows through the lines that would support a larger service. So we've denied them their request to upgrade it to a one and a half inch service at this time.
Okay, so our spec is one inch?
Yep, one inch when we're upgrading the services.
Okay, thank you. Manager Neil, or Director Hall again, with state aid route construction, are we affected at all by the shutdown?
Yes, we are. We're affected in that, on our state, when we have state aid funds coming in, we have to utilize, or that the plants where those, where the concrete comes from and the asphalt comes from needs to be MINDOT certified. We have Brown InterTech, who actually has contracted out with the state on a lot of their state projects as being MINDOT certified, so they're actually certifying our material that's coming out to the job. So it's a little different than a bridge project, where you have to certify the beams, we just, they just have to certify the asphalt or the concrete that's coming out to the project.
And because of the shutdown, we have a sourcing issue right now? Is that what you're saying?
Sourcing, not a sourcing, but just, MINDOT doesn't have their certified personnel at those plants, and we're actually paying Brown to have personnel at those plants.
So it's a worker, I mean, where it's a worker?
That's right, yep, yep.
So, so construction will continue?
Yep.
Okay. There was a child luring incident on 59th and Kellogg on, I think it was Thursday. I saw a press release when, Friday, I got a couple, I got an email and a message from a resident that lived in the vicinity that was concerned that she was not contacted. She actually learned about it on television, and then they had a driveway conference with some other concerned parents. And my question tonight is, I know we have City Extra, now that's a passive system that we have to rely on people subscribing to in order to work. Do we have an alternative crime alert system? And I'm talking about even low-tech things like flyering a zone, you know, a block or two radius in the area of a child luring. It would seem like we'd have some type of practice set up, or if there was, I don't know, some other immediate hazard where we would have a crime alert that could go out to reach affected residents within the radius of the incident.
Councilmember Sprague and members of the council, we do have what's called the Code Red System, which is a system that we can employ to leave voicemails or on landlines or cellphones. You can sign up for your cellphone online through the city's website. In this case, the police department was not sure enough of the facts that they wanted to get out a more urgent message.
Would another alternative be to flyer the block or blocks within the affected area? Because robo-calling, again, you have to have a number. Everyone has a mailbox in Edina.
It would, but they also have to be, they also have to be convinced, I think, of the legitimacy of the claim before they would take on that kind of notification.
And if they did see the legitimacy of the claim, do we have a policy in place that could allow for some flyering or some type of immediate notice?
I don't know that we do. I don't know that we have to have a policy in place.
We don't have a policy, but certainly we have done that in cases of water emergencies. We've fliered neighborhoods, and we've done those, you know, boots-on-the-street sorts of things. This case was really, the legitimacy of the claim was questioned.
I looked at the federal grants synopsis in the schedule of expenditures of federal awards year-ending December 31, 2010. We got $650,000. I just was cur, I wanted you to put that into context, Manager Neil, is that, you know, a large amount? And do you think that with the addition of an economic director, we'll be able to leverage additional federal dollars?
I would say, is that a large amount? That's probably a large amount compared to what Edina and comparable communities to Edina have received in federal aid over the last 20 years. And it spiked in the last year because of the ARA legislation that was passed and used for energy conservation projects. Would that number be something that an economic development manager would be able to affect? Maybe, but that's probably not, but probably not. Most of, most of the benefit of that kind of position in this community is going to be from redevelopment kinds of projects, and less from the grant world. Edina's not a, Edina's not a very, very, what am I trying to say here? Grant-eligible, grant-friendly community, when you're stacked up against many other communities in a queue at a federal or state level.
Okay. And then finally, it was my first year in the Fourth of July Parade, and I just wanted to say what an honor it was to be in it. And I had all four kids. It was interesting to have them all walk that parade route. We did make it. Actually, two were pushed in the cart, in the stroller, so it made it a little easier. And I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to next year, being on some type of floater ride with the, my colleagues. And I have, I'm a visual thinker, so I've already kind of designed the shirt. It's going to be a football jersey with the arms cut off, and then on the back it's going to say, you know, on the front it'll say council, on the back will be your name, and then you'll have a number. And I just want to reserve seven right now. That's all I have. Thanks.
Gosh, it's kind of hard to talk after that one. Director Hall, there's a bump in the Concord sidewalk, are you aware of it?
Pardon me?
There's a bump in the sidewalk that goes along Concord Road between the school and the junior high, I mean, a huge bump. I mean, like, I don't know what happened. I've never seen concrete have a heat issue, but it's, you'd go airborne if you had a, so, can I report that?
We'll take a look at it this morning.
And then, I was hoping that Director Teague would be here, but he really didn't have anything on the agenda, so I don't blame him for being here, for not being here. But the, I did watch the planning commission on the York air conditioner thing, and there's one piece of information I would like him to ask the developer to bring in, is apparently there's some sort of system you can attach to this air conditioner that tones the sound down, and at the planning commission, the gentleman stated that he didn't know how long it would take to get here. He knew the cost. He just apparently had never researched how long it, I need to know that, and I'd like to know how long it would then take to put on, because apparently when we move this chiller next to the other chiller, it's still going to be loud, so I would like to at least know what the option is of potentially getting it on this summer and then moving it with it on, so that we have a chiller that stays quieter. That's it?
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Member Sprague, some of us may have other ideas, particularly about attire, for the parade next year. The parade was a lot of fun and obviously a lot of work, and many thanks to everybody who contributed to it. Very, very special event and huge crowds this year, so many, many thanks. Also, Member Brindle and I spent two mid-days last week interviewing students who have applied to serve on city boards and commissions. Many, many thanks to City Clerk Deb Mangan, who scheduled the interviews and proctored them and kept students really kind of warmed up and comfortable and relaxed before interviews. And as we have found with adults we have interviewed for regular board and commission positions, there is so much talent in this community. It's a real pleasure to be able to interview, and I anticipate that Member Brindle and I will have a written report for all of you by the next meeting with our recommendations for appointments.
Thank you.
Thank you both for doing that.
Member Brindle?
It was a pleasure to do it. The kids, the students, bring a real fresh perspective to our commissions, and we get it firsthand in the interview, so it's really nice. And they're genuinely very nice people. I have a couple things. First, to continue the parade theme, because it is, it's the biggest day in our city in the year, and it's just a fabulous celebration and outpouring of people along the parade route who thoroughly enjoy a good party. So, so thanks to everybody involved notwithstanding. I mean, there are so many people to thank, certainly the committee, and I'm sure the mayor is going to say something about that. But having been on this committee for a number of years, it's impossible to hold a parade such as the one we hold without the, just the broad involvement of all aspects of our community, nonprofit organizations, corporate organizations, and all of the volunteers. It's fabulous. And I sat on the sidelines for the first time ever and watched, and I'm really glad I did, because it is, you know, it's just, it's this snippet of timing that just passes by you, and it's great fun, so I'm glad I did it once. A couple things. Continuing on one of the thoughts that I have about the public hearing that we held tonight regarding the safety area and accessibility and walkable area at Sally Lane and Valley View Road, there is what used to be an easement between a couple of homes between even from, I think, Paiute Pass, which is the corner of the street on which I live, and then continuing to Valley View, so that any pedestrians don't have to go all the way out to Sally, go all the way out to Valley View, and then go east on Valley View. They could actually walk the easement, which was a little, might have been asphalt at the time, but cow path, if you will, that would get people from one place to another on foot and on bicycle and keep them out of harm's way. And that is gone. The easement has been taken over by the current property owners. And matter of fact, the reason I found that out is because Ralph and I were walking, and I said, "There's a pathway. I want to find this pathway." And somebody saw us looking for it and said, "Uh-uh, you're not coming through here." So I would like to just alert ourselves and our staff and say, "Residents wanting to own the cow path, the easement that was meant to be, to make our city walkable and safe, I say no, absolutely not. That's part of the infrastructure of our city, put in there to make our city easy to get around, to enhance the kids' ability to get to school." So, so that, I don't want to see that happen again. If we did it once, great, let's just never do it again. And that'll probably be a topic I'll hear a lot. Gleason Road, road repair across, across town, is going on right now. I am so pleased. Hennepin County is paving that area. It's going to be smooth and soft, and it's been just a, just a field of potholes for years. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. That's wonderful. The last thing I have is in the line of sightlines. I did tour an area with a couple of residents recently, at Parkwood Road and London Dairy Road, and there are some similar sightline issues there, where we are dealing with beautiful landscaping that is Evergreens, and actually an Arbevida hedge that is in worst non-compliance than, worst non-compliance than what we experience at Valley View and Sally. So, just a shout-out to residents, if you're hearing this and you've got plans to do some major vegetation in your easement, think about it, maybe call and ask for some advice from your, from your city. We don't want you to feel like you can't put a privacy hedge up, but if you do, let's make sure you know what to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Before I get to the parade and all the Fourth of July activities, just a few things that went on in the past couple of weeks. A couple of things regionally, on the 20th of June, we had, I'll back up a minute, when we started looking at where our region performs well from an economic standpoint, we looked for our strongest areas and medical devices. We have a significant advantage, advantage over the rest of the country, and so with the encouragement of the regional council of mayors, we helped promote the establishment of a pilot program, and we call it a medical device cluster board, for want of a better description. And it is actually getting a bit of traction amongst the industry folks, and I went to the third meeting on the 20th, which was right in our hometown here of Edina, and it was over at Tornier. Doug Kors is business over at Tornier, and had great participation from medical device industry folks, including Mike Langley, who was there from Greater MSP, which is the Regional Economic Development Partnership. Mike's a savvy guy, and he knows you play to your strengths, and this is indeed a strength for us. And then on the 23rd, I had a visit in the afternoon with Brad McDermott from the Brookings Institute, is, and I can't recall if I've told the council, but we're one of four regions picked for working with Brookings on a export initiative strategy. So it's Minneapolis-St. Paul, Portland, Oregon, Los Angeles, California, and Syracuse, New York. And that should be a real interesting endeavor. The president has been promoting the fact that we need to be exporting more. When you look at a country like Germany, it has one-fourth, I think, to GDP that we have. They export more into the world than we do. And so we're going to be working on some export strategies for our region. And then on the 28th, we had a meeting of our Healthy Communities Group with Bloomington and Richfield, and a little bit of help from Blue Cross Blue Shield. We're working on some strategies there for helping people live longer, better lives. And then on the 23rd, with Jennifer Bennerott, Sable Assistance, I presented to the Edina Noon Rotary, kind of a mini version of the State of the City, and I think that was well-received. Folks always like getting information about what's going on in their community. Now, to the Fourth of July-related activities, talk about a great community builder, the activities surrounding the Fourth of July, starting the night before on the 3rd out at Braemar with the Veterans Dinner. Any veteran, Mary can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think any veteran and their spouse or significant other, you don't have to be an Edina veteran, you can come to that dinner.
That's, that's true.
And we packed Braemar, and it was food from Famous Dave's, and Famous Dave's picked up the tab for every single vet and their spouse at the dinner. And it was a great event. Richard Olson, who's the chair of the parade, was there that night, Peter Crane, who's helped for years on the parade, and Karen Meehan, who helped do some of the fundraising for the parade. They had a drawing, I didn't know about this until the morning of the parade, I guess the night before, they had a drawing for Luns, who wanted to ride with the mayor in the parade. So I ended up with Max, and I can't remember Max's last name. We had Max with us in the parade, and then I had announced at my morning Rotary group that we needed more kids to fill up the carriage, and so we had all kinds of volunteers, and all the kids knew each other, which was great. So they had a really wonderful time. And I think it was the best parade we've ever And I think it was the best parade we've ever had. It was perfect, picture-perfect weather. Even our fit council member Sprague had a little bit of sweat on his brow. Not much, but a little bit of glow on his brow from walking a mile or so. And it was a beautiful morning. And then followed in the evening by the Souza Band concert down at Roslyn Park, and our own Mary Brindle is in the Souza Band, led by Scott Crosby. And when they roll into, after an hour of playing, the Stars and Stripes Forever, and it's dark, and the fireworks starts, it's quite dramatic, and the fireworks were just extraordinary. So I want to thank Fairview-Saltdale Hospital for that generous gift over the past few years to make all of that possible. Lots of people to thank, Luns, Jerrys, Famous Dave's, and of course, Fairview-Saltdale. So it was a tremendous way to make people feel embraced by the community we all live in and call home. And that's it for me. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, I have a quick report. We're starting to bring together kind of our budget basics for this year, just the basic numbers and scenarios that we're looking at for kind of existing cost operations into next year, and also figuring out how to segregate new plans from existing operating budgets. So we're working on that right now. Still working on what our options might be for the public process part that we want to add to the process this year. I've given you all a chance to take a look at the Quality of Life Survey presentation. Ms. Bennerott and I did a post-survey discussion with the consultants from Decision Resources. They will be here at the next council meeting to present the findings and the results, and also to take any questions that you might have at that meeting. Our results were outstanding, and I'll let the consultant tell you how outstanding they were, but I'll tell you, they were very outstanding. We had a meeting last week with the folks who are advocating the Sports Dome project, and that meeting was large-scale and included representatives from a number of youth sports groups. They plan to also be at the council's work session on the 19th of July, which is dedicated to that topic at 5:30 is when we're going to start that night. I know that there will be, there's a lot of interest in getting a, if not a direction, a general feeling, I think, from the council about whether this is a project that you want to see staff, see staff begin to take a more active role in, or if it's one that you would like to see kind of go through the regular capital improvement process. So, you know, there's probably a range of options there, but those are kind of your basic ones. Either we take this project and kind of elevate it on our list of projects, or we let it come up through the regular process the regular way. And that's all I have for you tonight. Thanks.
Good. I have a couple of questions for you, based on your Wednesday, June 29th email to us. Six-month performance review, I think you had indicated that you were going to start that process in July. Was there any action required on our part, or you initiated the process for that?
There will be an action required on your part. The way that Mr. Bruhl does this, and again, you have to, you have to, you can tacitly consent to it if you wish, but the way he is proposing to do it is a kind of a full 360-style review. So council members would weigh in. There's a form that you would get that is not very complex, but would allow you to add your own comments to a mix. There would be an opportunity for employees of all throughout the hierarchy to participate, not all of them, but a representative sample of them. They get to grade my performance so far, they get to give me some comments. All those comments go back to Mr. Bruhl. He aggregates them and then comes in for a closed-session meeting with you and the, with you and I, and he'll present that information to you, and you can see, you know, we get a kind of a full 360 view of performance.
Okay, good. Thanks.
So if that, if that sounds good to everybody, that's the way we'll do it.
I think that sounds...
Manager Neil, didn't we receive the questionnaire already?
There is.
That was a sample? I already sent mine back. Did you, that, that's the, yeah, that's, that's... Okay, so... You don't have to, yeah, it's, I know, it said, it had the wrong city name. I was kind of waiting for the real one. But the questions are the same. But the questions will be the same. So I'm done. You're done. Thank you. Yeah, you can't change your answers now. Sorry. Thanks.
With regard to the 2010 census numbers that you announced to us on the 1st of July, I think that came through via the Metropolitan Council.
Yes.
We're up about 500 people, I think, from the prior decade. What are the implications, if any, that you see right now for those population counts and household counts?
What are the implications for our operations as a city government?
For our operations or for, you know, eligibility for grants from the council? Are we in any different kind of category?
Not much of an impact at all. There could be some impact when we go over the 50,000 mark. There's an impact in the community development block grant world when that happens. There are some other impacts when that happens, but the increase in the 2010 numbers was relatively small, and so it doesn't have an increase. I don't think it has any impact for us operationally or legally in any other way, except we need to change our signs. I'm coming into and out of town.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
We've had some comment about CIP tonight, and I do have a question. When, as we discussed tonight, there is something that appears on the CIP, and either because, like the Edinburgh bathrooms, the year that they were originally scheduled, the bids come in higher than we're comfortable with. Is there a process of amendment? The state statute mentions amendment of the CIP, and through the years, I've noticed that we've moved things around. Do we, do we need to be doing a process of formal amendment? How is that handled?
Do we need to formally amend? So, so do you mean the...
If a project is set for a year, because the way we sometimes explain the CIP to people is that for the current year, it's like a budget, or it is a budget, and then for other years, it's placeholders. Well, when something that is in that budget does not get done because it proves to be too expensive, because the funding isn't available the way we thought it was, and either gets pushed back farther in the list or disappears from the list, is there a process that is supposed to be done that recognizes that there was that delay or removal from the list?
And are you asking whether that process, obviously, when you do your next CIP, it's sort of, there's an amendment, the whole document is amended, but are you asking whether we do individual amendments for line items that are in that we don't do?
Yes, yes, for individual items, like would be done for budget.
I don't think typically that cities would do that. I don't know if that's a practice we have here. Other places I've worked in Minnesota, we have not. We look at the big number in the CIP as the number that you stay under, and if you go over, there's an explanation. But I don't know if the component part projects, I'm looking at Mr. Hull to see if there's something we do differently here, but...
We don't. If we add a project, we've done amendments, large projects, like Public Works and different other projects like that. But as far as roadway projects or other projects that we have, I know in my part of this, the CIP, there's a, over the years, there's been a number of projects where we just have staff time, or things came up that we couldn't get those projects, and we've pushed those out to future years when we redo the CIP, so...
I would say there ought to be, though, some kind of reconciliation between staff and council on that kind of decision, because there are lots of policy decisions that are incorporated into even not doing a project, right? As many that are incorporated in not doing a project as in doing a project that wasn't on the list. So there should be some kind of reconciliation, I think, in a public way for the council.
Some of us have been, I think, trying to keep track, and the binders that we get every year are helpful for that, but it would be, I think, probably most helpful to have something that was more condensed.
Okay. I'll talk to Mr. Wallen about that to see what options there might be in kind of the formal range for them.
I forgot about one other thing, this Director Hull. We had a discussion back in May on London Dairy and Parkwood Intersections, and you were going to do some follow-up work there. We have one of our residents who's in, and I was wondering if anything has come of that.
We've, staff has done quite a bit of work on that intersection, along with Council Member Brindle has met with that individual. So I'm not sure where we're at with it, if we're bringing it back to the council at some point. I believe that what we'd like to do is bring it to the Transportation Commission and get their comments on that intersection. There's kind of a quick, I hate to do another temporary measure, but there's actually a quick fix that we could do to eliminate some of that pavement over there, bring in some vegetate and some sod, basically, and kind of square off that intersection. There's a longer-term fix that I think the Transportation Commission should really look at, because it's not only the intersection that they were looking at, but there's also a number of other intersections further to the west that are, don't align very well, or they have many legs coming in, or if there's a cut through on South Side of Stoddard Pond and things like that. So I guess you'll probably be seeing it come through the Transportation Commission within the next month or so.
That's good. I just want to make sure it hadn't drifted away. It sounds like you're on top of that, and it'll go, work its way through the Transportation Commission. And then, let's see, Member Sprague was diligent about coming up with an idea for a construction management plan. I think he talked to Director Teague about it, circulated a draft of it.
Working on that.
Yeah, okay, good. I marked one up, too, and had some other ideas. So I'll just give that to you, but I thank you for thinking of this idea. It was a good thought. All right, that's it for me. Anyone else? Let's figure anything?
Mayor and council, we still have one candidate that we have not interviewed. Jay Halverson was not available tonight.
Thanks for raving that.
And we had, I had sent a note out, but I didn't, I don't have a date. He is available any day next week.
We are going to make, we are going to make a recommendation to the council, based on the people we interviewed tonight, we will not need to interview Mr. Halverson. Yeah, I know he was unavailable this evening, but with the council's work schedule, we decided to make a decision on that. Thank you. And encourage him to apply again, please. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, good. We stand adjourned.